We're in the lead. Snoopy won by a whisper.
The City of Sparks along-
Mr. Benwell?
Here.
Commissioner Carey?
Present.
Commissioner Brock?
Here.
Commissioner Few?
Here.
Commissioner Peterson?
Present.
Commissioner Please?
Here.
Commissioner Shabazz?
Absent.
Assistant City Attorney Allison Forman?
Here.
Assistant Community Services Director Armando Arnellis?
Here.
Thank you. And I will remind the commissioners that since it's being recorded, if you can please, when you go to speak, if you'll please identify yourselves. Next, we'll move on to public comment. This item is for any- anyone wishing to speak for three minutes. Do we have any requests to speak?
Yes.
Well, it's items on or off the agenda.
Off the agenda.
Okay. And if you- after you speak, if you'll fill out a card for us, that'd be great.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Don Young. I live at 1185 Harbor Cove Court in the Marina Home subdivision. I know the Planning Commission is not to take the lead in items such as this, but I'm asking for your support. The first is to ask NDOT to install a Jersey barrier along the south side of the Marina Park along I-80. And the reason for this is we had a semi truck crash through into the dog park last year. And fortunately, there was only one woman in the park at the time. She assisted the driver and she called 911. But she was terrified with this semi coming into the dog park. It would also help to attenuate the noise from the freeway. I walk the park every day, and it's very hard to carry a conversation when you're traveling along the south side of the park. So that's the first item. I did have one other item, and that was I would encourage you to support the Parks Commission in their attempt to ban smoking within public parks. And it's very difficult to get healthy exercise when you have secondhand smoke in your lungs. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Next, we'll move on to approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes?
Would you please ask if there's any other public comment?
I apologize.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? And then if- please, if you'll fill out a card when you're done. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. There weren't any forms out front. That's why I didn't fill out.
Oh, thank you.
My name is Barbara Young. I live at 1185 Harbor Cove Court, and my comments are with in regard to the proposed restaurant at the waterfront building. I've lived at the Marina since 2004, and I was a frequent customer of the past restaurants that were there. When I first heard of the new restaurant opening building, I was delighted. Then I heard it was going to be open until 2:00 a.m., and I had some concerns. I began to change my opinion after I read the staff report that was presented to the Planning Commission. This week, Mr. Turner of the Tahoe Restaurant Collection had a meet-and-greet meeting at the waterfront building where he further answered my questions regarding my concerns of noise, parking, and traffic. I'm impressed with the extent that they plan to remodel and expand the restaurant to the outdoor patio area. I think the new venue will have a positive impact on my neighborhood and Sparks in general. I wanted to state that I am 100% in favor of allowing their operational hours to extend until 2:00 a.m. I hope you will approve the request because I look forward to being a frequent customer of the restaurant. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more requests to speak? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rock Cole. I'm regarding the quarry project. Do I speak now for that, or?
You can speak now, or you can speak during the agenda item when we call it.
Okay, I'll wait for that.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other requests to speak? Okay, seeing none, I will ask for approval of the agenda.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Peterson.
Commissioner Peterson, I'd like to approve the agenda as read.
Second. Okay, I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Next, we'll move along to approval of the minutes. So we want review and possible approval for the minutes of the March 13th Planning Commission study session. So I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Carey.
Yeah, Commissioner Carey. I'm sure the minutes from the March 15, 2018, study session looked fine to me. I'd make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted. Commissioner Few, on second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Any comments? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we'll move along to review and possible approval of the minutes of the March 15 Capitol Improvements Advisory Committee for-
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
Commissioner Peterson, I move to approve the minutes for the Advisory Committee meeting.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reed, second.
Thank you. I have a first and a second. Any comments? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we'll move along to review and possible approval of the minutes of the March 15, 2018 Planning Commission meeting.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Brock. I move to approve the Thursday, March 15 Planning Commission meeting minutes.
Okay.
Commissioner Peterson, I'll second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Any comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I will abstain. I was not here. Next, we'll move along to announcements and committee reports.
Madam Chair, this is Armando Arnellis. We have neither any announcements, nor at least on my part, any committee reports.
Thank you. Next, we'll move along to informational items.
Again, Armando Arnellis, we have no informational items on the part of staff.
Thank you. Next, we'll move along to public hearing items. We will start with PCN 17-0051. Consideration and possible action for the development handbook for Kylie Ranch North Phase 7.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and Planning Commissioners. I'm Karen Melby, Development Service Manager. Before you tonight is a request to amend the final development handbook for Kylie Ranch Phase 7. This is a site that's approximately 69 acres and is located within the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development. As you can see on the map here, this is the parcel outlined in blue. On December 7, 2017, the Planning Commission reviewed this final draft of the Kylie North Phase 7 Handbook and recommended that the City Council approve the final handbook. The City Council approved the final handbook on January 8, 2018. The final handbook was then recorded on January 31, 2018. Prior to the review of the Planning Commission, staff had met with the applicant and asked them to make a correction to Figure 2-3 Phase 7 Circulation Plan on page 2-9 in the final development handbook. The correction delineates lazy five Parkway as a collector to be constructed to the eastern boundary of the Kylie Ranch Plan Development. This is the page. This is the line that I'm talking about that needs to be delineated. This is to show that with the development of this phase, this connection would have to be provided. The applicant had provided the corrected page in the final handbook. However, when we were preparing the handbook for recordation, we realized that the public meetings before Planning Commission and City Council, we had posted the old version of the handbook with the wrong page. So in order to make sure that we get the correct page in the correct recording, we are before you today asking that you accept this corrected page. This is a request from the staff and not the property owner to correct this page and approve the handbook with the corrected page 2-9 of the Phase 7 Kylie Ranch North Plan Development Handbook. And as I stated, this illustrates that this connection needs to be made with the development of the Phase 7. To review the findings, Finding A, which is consistent with the comprehensive plan in the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan, this amendment complies with Goals MG6, Goal H1, Policy CF1, and Policy RC22 because Phase 7 includes a variety of residential densities, incorporates amenities such as trails, is included in the sewer modeling and the traffic studies, which is not expected to exceed with the build-out, design of the area, and includes the preservation of open space and existing drainage along the eastern property. Finding B, which is consistent with the surrounding land uses, the proposed amendment to the handbook does not change any approved land uses in the final handbook, nor the development standards or the planned street network. To the north, south, and west of this property is all within the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development. To the east is Pioneer Meadows. The construction of this road would provide an east-west connection. Finding C, which is a fiscally positive to the city, a fiscal analysis was not submitted as part of this amendment since this request is a correction to an exhibit in the handbook or the recorded handbook and does not have any fiscal impacts on the city. Finding D, it furthers the mutual interests of the residents and owner. This amendment is a correction to an exhibit in the planned development handbook, which was the completion, which is the completion of the lazy five Parkway and will benefit the vehicular circulation in North Sparks. Finding E, which is will not impair the reasonable reliance of the residents within the planned development, the proposed amendment to the handbook does not change the approved land uses, the development standards, or the planned street network, and there are no residents in this area, only one property owner at this time. Finding F will not result in changes that would adversely impact the public interest. This correction to the exhibit will benefit the public interest by clarifying that there is a need, the needed east-west road connecting Vista Boulevard to Pyramid Highway will be required when the Kylie Ranch Plan Development Phase 7 is developed. Finding G, which is consistent with the efficient development and preservation of the entire planned development, this correction to the exhibit is consistent with the efficient development and the preservation of the entire Kylie Ranch North Plan Development by clarifying that a needed east-west roadway connecting Vista Boulevard to the Pyramid Highway is required when the Phase 7 handbook, the Phase 7 is developed. Finding H is does not adversely affect the enjoyment of abutting lands or across the street. Again, this is a correction to a figure within the planned development handbook and does not change any land uses and will provide a needed east-west road connection. Finding I, not granted solely to confer private benefit, this property is owned by one single property owner right now, and the figure, however, the figure clarifies the completion of it, the east-west connection, which will benefit other residents within Spanish Springs Valley. The last finding is J, which is regarding public notice. The notice of this was published in the Reno Gazette Journal on March 22, 2018. 532 notices were mailed out to the property owners within 750 feet of this property. Staff is recommending approval, and that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing item, so are there any requests to speak? If we have any? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion, motion.
On to discussion, Carey.
Yeah.
May I ask, please, Commissioner Peterson? May I ask, didn't we, didn't this Planning Commission approve this with all those findings before? We're not changing any of the findings, are we?
Actually, it was a different set of findings that you originally approved. This is for when there's an amendment. The findings that we went to, I just went through, are the findings that are in the code for when you amend a planned development. When you amend a, when you record a final map, there's only five findings that you have to make, and that's consistent with the tentative handbook. So this is a different set of findings that I reviewed tonight.
But all those conditions in those findings are the same, aren't they?
Uh, no. It's, the five findings are relating to, for a final handbook, is there substantial change in residential density ratio? Is there change in open space? They're on that line. They're a little different than these findings. But the intent of these findings are that potentially you could be amending a final handbook that already has residents in there. So you need to be cognitiv of when you're changing something in a recorded handbook that have residents in it, and that's why those findings are a little bit different.
Thank you.
Right. Any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman.
Commissioner Peterson.
Commissioner Peterson, again. I move to forward to the City Council a recommendation of approval for this amendment to the final handbook for Phase 7 of the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development, PCN 17-0051, based on the findings as set forth in this staff report.
Commissioner Reed, second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Next, we'll move along to PCN 18-0010 and its consideration and possible action on a conditional use permit to allow a craft beer taproom, then you develop it at Kylie Ranch, 5318 Sparks Boulevard.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. Planning Commissioners, Jonathan Cummings, Assistant Planner. PCN 18-0010 is a conditional use permit request for a craft beer taproom at 5318 Sparks Boulevard, the site outlined in blue in the image. The proposed tenant space is 2,480 square feet on a 1.2-acre parcel, zoned PD for the Kylie Ranch South Plan Development. The Kylie Ranch South handbook was adopted in 1993, and the present site was built in 2008. When the handbook was written in the 1990s, sports bar, staff believes was a more common use than it is today. We also believe that craft beer taproom, as proposed by the applicant, closely fits that category and per the handbook would require a conditional use permit. Staff believes that the proposed CUP complies with each of the following required five findings. Finding C1, compliance with the master plan. We believe this supports MG1 in support of economic vitality. The commercial use would add to the mix of uses for the site that already exists there. Finding C2 requires compatibility with surrounding land uses. The present site is surrounded by retail as well as a small casino in the same shopping center as well as a restaurant. Finding C3 requires we address the impairment of natural resources as an already established commercial site. We don't believe that that impact applies here. Finding C4 requires that we address other impacts, and we have received no comments from other agencies. And C5 requires public notice, which was published in Reno Gazette Journal on March 22, as well as the posting for this week's meeting agenda. The one condition that would be involved in this CUP, in addition to approval and expiration, would be that the applicant meet the standards of the Sparks Environmental Control as well as Washoe County Health in the preparation of food on the site. So staff's recommending approval, and I'll be glad to take questions.
Great, thank you. This is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Are there any requests to speak? Yes, sir. Then if you'll please fill out a comment card when you're done. That's great. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joe Peterson, and I'm the owner of a property directly adjacent to the proposed bar taproom. I have significant concerns that it's directly adjacent to residential property. I am opposed to it. I would not be opposed to it if it was one on one of the other parcels that are available in that same complex. We have concerns regarding the hours of operation, being that it is directly adjacent to the residential, in addition to concerns about the potential noise. Additional concerns and reasons for my opposition are that it could potentially negatively affect the property value. To be completely honest, I'm a fan of taprooms and craft breweries, so it's nothing against that. It's just that it's directly adjacent to residential property, specifically one that I own. We're not opposed, and when we purchased the property, it was obviously zoned for commercial, so we're fully expecting it to be developed and used at some point. Our hope would that it be used for office, retail, some other purpose, even a restaurant, something other than a bar. So that, that's my thought, and thank you for hearing my comments.
Thank you very much. Are there any other requests to speak? Okay, hearing, yes, Mr. Arnellis.
I just wanted to make note, Armando Arnellis, I just wanted to make note that I think you've been provided with a copy of an email from Paul Patoka with his concerns and opposition to this. So, for the record.
Thank you. Okay, no other requests to speak. I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for comments, questions, motion. Commissioner Carey.
Comment if I may, Madam Chair. I certainly appreciate with what staff's trying to do here, this is an older handbook, and I certainly agree with the findings that you brought up, and that the closest equivalent use that we had in this old handbook was a, was a sports bar. To me, I think that this is a compatible use with the existing uses on-site. I think with other commercial uses, the other restaurants, I don't, I don't think that this would be any different than what's already there on-site. Certainly appreciate the public comments that we've received, but if this was a C2 zone property as opposed to an old handbook from 1993, this item wouldn't be here today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have any comments, questions? I have one question, Mr. Cummings. What are the hours of operation?
We haven't exactly hashed that out with the applicant, but he is here. If you would potentially be able to speak to his intentions.
Sure. Please have the applicant.
My name is Marshall Blaisdell. I'm the applicant on the permit here. From Monday through Thursday, we're looking at being open from about 1:00 in the afternoon to about 8:00 at night, with Friday and Saturday being from noon to, we're requesting to as late as midnight, but we don't anticipate being there that late. We would just like that grace in the permit. We're probably still projecting about between 9:00 and 10:00 on both of those nights.
And I just follow-up question, so is going to be food along with the craft beer?
Yes, it'll be, the closest thing that I can think of, I don't know if anybody here has been to Pinion in downtown Reno, it's gonna be a similar model to that. It will be craft beer served on-site, as well as you can buy it to go in pre-sealed containers that come directly from the brewery, and we will offer food as well. So that's where we're doing with that.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Reed.
Will there be outdoor seating?
No.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. With that, I will, comments, questions, motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve the conditional use permit CU 18-0004, associated with PCN 18-0010, adopting finding C1 through C5 and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, subject to the three conditional, conditions of approval as listed in the staff report.
Commissioner Brock, second.
Thank you. I have a first and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Next, we'll move along to PCN 18-0004. Consideration of a conditional use permit to, for extended dining hours from 10:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. for 325 Harbor Cove Drive. Mr. Cummings.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Planning Commissioners, I'm Jonathan Cummings, Assistant Planner. PCN 18-0004 is a conditional use permit- PCN 18-0004 is a conditional use permit request for hours of operation and outdoor dining on a 1.16 acre site located at 325 Harbor Cove Drive, outlined in blue in the image. Following the Marina area plan, which was adopted by City Council in December of 1997, the Marina Village Handbook was adopted in 1999, which called for a mix of commercial as well as residential uses. The present site was constructed in 2002, and the center's been used for multiple businesses, including offices, a previous restaurant at the current site, as well as a coffee shop which is open today. The proposed tenant space will include 7,700 square feet of indoor restaurant and 3,500 square feet of outdoor restaurant space. Per the Sparks Municipal Code, restaurants with outdoor seating will hold hours of operation until 10:00 PM unless those hours are extended by conditional use permit. The present CUP, conditional use permit request would allow the restaurant to be open until 2:00 AM with any amplification of sound to cease at 10:00 PM. Staff believes that the present permit complies with the following five required findings for a conditional use permit, including finding C1 for compliance with the comprehensive plan. Staff believes that the proposed use meets goals MG1, promoting economic vitality, goal MG2 for maintaining a diversity and land use mix, goal MG4 for facilitating infill and redevelopment, goal EV1, further diversifying the Sparks economy, and goal EV2, attracting investment and providing jobs. Finding C2 requires compatibility with surrounding uses. The proposed use shares a building with a coffee shop, like I said, as well as various offices adjacent to a walking and biking path which connects the commercial area to surrounding residential areas. Finding C3 addresses the impairment of natural resources. First of all, the proposed use should be going into an existing commercial site, creating no additional impacts to the natural resources additionally. This conditional use permit is for hours of operation and noise. Finding C4 addresses any other identified impacts. The Sparks Police Department has informed us that they do on a temporary basis issue noise permits for special events. Additionally, the applicant has retained an acoustic engineer who has established that there is a baseline of noise already existing at the site caused by the freeway and train tracks which are nearby and audible. Further, there are no issues from other agencies. Finding C5 requires public notice, which was published in the Reno Gazette Journal on March 22nd as well as the agenda for tonight's meeting. In addition to approval and expiration, the conditions that staff has included in this conditional use permit are that outdoor dining be limited to the hours of 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM, that no amplified sound be generated at the site past 10:00 PM, and that noise permits, when required, would meet the approval of the Sparks Police Department. So staff's recommending approval and I'll be glad to answer your questions.
Thank you. Do you have an applicant? Would the applicant like to speak?
We do have an applicant. I don't know if he would like to speak.
Okay.
I'm here.
Well, it's up to you. If you, do any of the Commissioners have any questions at this time of the applicant?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, yes, please.
Good evening. My name's Tom Turner from the Tahoe Restaurant Collection.
Commissioner Reed, for the record, I have a question regarding the outdoor seating. You're asking the hours to be extended till 2:00 AM. Will there be outdoor seating up to 2:00 AM or is it going to go indoors at any point?
It's really a function of weather at this point. We have four restaurants in Tahoe we have outside seating. We like, we serve dinner until 10:00 or 10:30 depending on the season, of course, the weather. So we feel that we'll have outside dining six months out of the year, and as the weather changes, it'll shrink in what times we actually serve outside. We would serve dinner until 10:00 or 10:30. People would sit outside until as long as it takes to eat dinner, or if they'd like to be leisurely about it and do whatever. We also have a bar component to the outside dining and seating, and people would sit out there. In California, we have to be all wrapped up by 2:00, so generally we're done by 1:30, although California is now considering extending its hours to 4:00 AM. Given what's going on in the Story County east of Sparks, people are choosing to work different hours and looking for venues where they can dine at different hours. So that's really our focus is, A, the view, B, along the water, C, having outside dining which is limited in this area.
Outside dining and drinking till 2:00 AM.
Probably 1:30.
1:30.
And mostly four months most of the time, you know, two months some of the time and six months probably never because of the cooler weather.
Thank you. Okay, any other Commissioners have any questions at this time? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tom, I don't know if you'll have an answer for this, but I thought I'd throw it out there. Thank you for submitting the sound report by your engineer. Do you have any kind of idea of how much noise would be produced outdoors from an outdoor restaurant like this?
Well, I don't know in decibel levels. We certainly have four restaurants where we do, but residential areas, Caliente and Kings Beach, Garwoods sort of has the same situation where the wind blows across the water and up into the neighborhood. We've never had a complaint. And as far as music, which was some of the concern, we have music probably three times a year outside at Garwoods as an example, and never past 9:00 as a matter of, just because that's the issue and that's our restriction in the Tahoe area, or at least at that restaurant. But we've never really had an issue. People tend to come and join in the fun more than they tend to complain about any sort of noise that exists. We do have glass around and we will have glass around the perimeter of the patio or deck, as well as large umbrellas. All that holds, tends to hold the noise inside. We will have, of course, background music with speakers, but those don't generate any more noise than a guest sitting there chatting.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reed, I have one more question. What are the hours of operation at your other restaurants in the Tahoe phase and Garwoods?
Yeah, so all the restaurants go from about 10:00 AM at the earliest, 9:30 on certain holidays, until 2:00 AM or 1:30 depending on when they're done, but somewhere between 1:30 and 2:00, but generally no one's outside between 1:30 and 2:00. We're cleaning up to meet the alcoholic beverage control rules.
So the same as what you'd like to see here?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is a public hearing and I'm going to open up the public hearing, and I have a request to speak from Mr. Don Young.
Yes, Don Young, 1185 Harbor Cove Court. I'm a resident of the Marina Home Subdivision, which is part of, well, the development handbook, had the waterfront building as part of it. I would like to thank the applicant, Mr. Turner, for attending our neighborhood and explaining what the concept of this restaurant was. Many of us within the neighborhood like to walk to lunch or dinner and welcome this opportunity for a new restaurant in which to do so. The staff report by Mr. Cummins was informative and well-written, and I do support the conditions of approval as they are presented. The concerns of the neighborhood were addressed by Mr. Turner, the staff report, and the conditions of approval, and I ask that you support this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Are there any other requests to speak? With that, I'll close the public hearing. I'll bring it back to the Commission. Mr. Ornelas.
Armando Ornelas, just wanted to again bring to your attention the copies of the emails that were provided to you earlier today. There was one from Len Nelson, objecting to the proposed hours of operation, Barbara Milcheck, also concerned about the hours of operation, Kathy Moberg, and then Barbara Young, which I think who I believe has spoken, so again, just for the record.
Perfect, thank you. I'll bring it back to the Commissioners. Any comments, questions? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two questions for staff. My first question, Jonathan, is about the police sound permit. Is that an annual kind of process that if this is approved, that the applicant would have to maintain?
It's, to the best of my understanding, it's an event-by-event sort of basis. When the restaurant owner or management wanted to hold an event that involved, for instance, a live band outdoors, that they would then request that the Police Department issue a noise permit in order to, you know, keep tabs on what was going on there at that time, to mitigate complaint issues and responses and things like that from patrol.
So the police report, if I'm understanding, it wouldn't, not police report, sorry. Hope there's none of those. The noise permit would be only for special events. It wouldn't be for just average outdoor dining?
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
Okay. The second question I had, Jonathan, was in your staff report, you talked about the finding for compatibility. I'm curious, in your opinion, how you can find the proposed use compatible with the uses on the west? In the staff report, it's listed as zoning is A40, but I believe that's the Sparks Marina Park. How is this proposed use compatible with the city park?
I mean, compatibility with the city park, I think, extends also to compatibility with surrounding residential, which is that the intention of the Marina Village Handbook was to incorporate a mix of commercial and residential, as well as whatever amenities may sort of contribute to both of those uses. And I believe that the existing restaurant space that exists there that Mr. Turner would be occupying, I think speaks to that as well, that it was a well-received use at the time before it closed down, as well as the coffee shop is there now in mornings, things that get people to the Marina from the surrounding residential, et cetera, et cetera.
I appreciate the answer to that tough question. Just my last follow-up is, is there any recourse if the proposed conditional use permit is approved? We have a ton of noise complaints. There's issues with, you know, with the adjacent park. What is the recourse for the city wants if this is approved?
I mean, as far as noise, you know, us being, including that there'd be 2:00 AM hours of operation for outdoor seating, if that were to create some sort of noise issue, obviously we would defer that to the police to mitigate that issue. I would defer for more than that. I think I would have to defer that to management who would be able to speak to how we've dealt with those in the past. I don't believe that we have a lot of issues with 2:00 AM restaurants because they're, frankly, in Sparks are not a lot.
Ornelas.
Armando Ornelas, I did speak with Deputy Chief Pete Call on this question, and, you know, to, as Mr. Cummins has noted, we don't have a lot of restaurants with outdoor dining in general in Sparks, so their experience is rather limited in that regard. We do have some issues, you know, in West Sparks in particular with regard to nightclubs where we have issues. That's a, I think that's a different type of establishment than what's contemplated here. In general, the answer that I got from Deputy Chief Call was that if there was a constant source of problems or complaints regarding this operation, the Police Department would meet with the restaurant's owners and management, or outdoor management, and they would work out a plan to reduce the call volume on that. I think certainly there's potentially some distinctions to be made in terms of the nature of things, of the calls. It might arise at any bar or restaurant in town, and they would have perhaps different solutions, but that would be generally the Police Department's approach as communicated to me by Deputy Chief Call.
Thank you, Armando. Thank you, John. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Any other questions or comments? Do I have any? I have a couple of questions. Do we have any other bar restaurants like this in the city of Sparks that are open until 2:00 AM?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. All righty, I think that's about it. Anybody else have any comments, questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Reed, once. I move to approve the conditional use permit CU 18-001, associated with PCN 18-004, adopting findings C1 through C5, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, subject to five conditions of approval as listed in the staff report.
I'll second. Commissioner Peterson.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of comments for the record, if I may. Appreciate the work of staff and the information from our Police Department. This is a tough one. I think it's the first time since our code has been updated to allow for this conditional use, that we've received this sort of outdoor dining request. I have had a chance to talk with some neighbors about this project and the concerns. I think one of the things that I have a concern about, that I'll just put on the record, is that there's not really much of a recourse for an annual sort of review. We have a, here's a noise, noise study, this is what the current level of sound is, we don't know what it'll be in the future. There's also a lot of folks moving into this area adjacent to the project. We don't really know what the impacts will be. But I think with that said, I can find some concurrence with staff's recommendation in that the vision for this project helps meet that plan, the Marina Plan from 1997 and 1999, which seems a long time ago. So I will be going with staff recommendation on this, but I would encourage the staff to take a look, monitor this proposed use, and if there are problems, try to mitigate them as much as possible. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Carey, any other comments? Anyone? I have a couple. I'm going to echo Commissioner Carey's concerns, since this is the first time we've tried this and we're kind of close to some residential, so I do have some, you know, I'm kind of concerned. I think that we've put enough rules around it that hopefully we can mitigate some of the things, so I will be supporting staff's recommendation. So with that, I'm going to call, all those are in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Next, we're going to move along to PCN 18-0008, conditional use permit to allow 231-unit multifamily, Rolling Hills Drive.
Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, Ian Crandall, Senior Planner, for the record. This is a request, as mentioned, for a 231-unit apartment complex located in a Pioneer Meadows Plan Development. It's indicated here on the map, outlined in blue. It will be just south of the future extension of Wingfield Hills Road, and currently with access off of Rolling Meadows Drive. There was a previous approved Lumina Phase 1 just to the west of this site, and there is a connecting road in between the two projects that will connect to that future extension of Wingfield Hills Road. So this site is designated as MF15 in the handbook, which allows densities up to 15 units per acre, which is the proposed density that this project has. The Pioneer Meadows Handbook has anticipated this area to develop as multifamily since 2006, when the land use plan was updated in the Pioneer Meadows Handbook, and Phase 1 of Lumina was approved in 2016. The elevations and architecture for this project, or this phase of Lumina, are different but compatible with the architecture in Phase 1, and the elevations and architecture provided and as conditioned or exceed the requirements of the Pioneer Meadows Handbook. through these as, kind of talk about some of the other issues, or, or, some of the other issues, the word that's coming to mind, but it's not the one I was looking for. The other findings and the other conditions that are there on the site and what they're proposing. As you can see, they use a multiple, or a variety of depths in the architecture. There's plenty of articulation. They have different materials and different colors, as is required. There is an element of using a vertical siding and a horizontal siding that staff felt were too similar to count towards the three materials required in the handbook, and the applicant is aware of that condition that is being proposed, that they include a third material, and that will come with the building permits. Sorry. There are a lot of building elevations, a lot of different building forms. The applicant has really gone out of their way to make sure there are a variety of building types, a variety of roofing forms and so forth, to make sure that the product is not just kind of cookie cutter and all looks the same. Get to the, this is what I was looking for, the layout for the site. The fire department has looked at the layout and circulation for the site and feels that it is in compliance with their requirements. There are five findings associated with conditional use permits. Finding C1 requires that the project be in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Staff feels that it is in compliance in that it provides sidewalks in support of policy C4. City services may be, or can be provided at acceptable service levels in compliance with policy CF1. And the development provides another housing option near a future business park location in support of policy H2 and Goal H2, which was clearly indicated. But across Wingfield Hills Drive is a large area that is designated for Office Park in the handbook. So, this will be an opportunity for some housing adjacent to that future employment area. Finding C2 requires compatibility with adjacent land uses. As mentioned, it is a business park, excuse me, business park to the north across Wingfield Hills. There is a single family that is approved but not yet built to the east. To the south, there is also, across Rolling Meadows, there is also some single family. And then to the west is the first phase, which is a multifamily product of the same name Lumina. Adjacent to the business park, as mentioned, is a very compatible and opportune use, a beneficial use. Staff feels that it's also appropriate adjacent to the other land uses here. Finding C3 requires consideration of the impacts on natural resources. This site has been anticipated for multifamily development since 2006. The handbook, or the development has been developed with that in mind, and the impact on natural resources was looked at as a whole when the Plan Development Handbook for Pioneer Meadows was approved. So, the creation of this location, or the development of this location as multifamily will not impact the site and the natural resources any more than was already anticipated and addressed. Following, finding C4 requires that we look at additional impacts. The site was designated, as mentioned repeatedly, as multifamily since 2006, so it's, the size of infrastructure and so forth was planned accordingly. Staff has received no additional agency comments in regards to this project. The additional requirement is that there is 15% landscaping required per handbook, and the proposed landscape plan does contemplate 20%. So, they are exceeding that requirement. The development does require, per the handbook, 314 parking spaces. They are providing 414 in a combination of in-garage and surface parking. The last issue that is proposed as a condition is that the right-of-way for the extension of Wingfield Hills Road be dedicated prior to the issuance of building permits, and that the construction of that road to the approval of the city engineer and administrator be accomplished prior to the issuing certificates of occupancy for the buildings as they come in. The final finding, C5, does require the notice be given. On this item, it was noticed in the Reno Gazette Journal on March 22nd, and 30 notices were mailed to adjacent owners of property within 500 feet on March 21st. That is the end of, our staff is recommending approval of this project. I have no additional comments for my presentation. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Great. Thank you. Does the applicant wish to come up and speak?
Sure. My name is Charles Dedling, I'm from Odyssey Engineering, and we represent the applicant. And we have read all of the conditions of approval and plan to adhere to all of those conditions as part of the civil improvements.
Great. Thank you.
Any questions?
Any of the commissioners have any questions?
Yeah, Madam Chair. Commissioner Fewons. Ian, when you say the road of Wingfield Springs Road, if you get that overhead map, how far are we talking about till that is done? Just in front of the, to the roundabout there?
Actually, the, we're requiring the connection of, keep going, there it goes, the connection of Wingfield Hills Road to the extent of the property. It will be all the way to the west. This actually goes in concert with the first item we heard tonight with Karen talking about Kylie Ranch North. This is an effort to make those two roads connect, and this is the second half of that connection project.
Do we have a timeline on that, Ian? Do you?
I know that the plans are under, in review. The short answer is no, we do not have a timeline for when it'll be finished, but there is work being done to try to make sure that happens. It is being worked on currently.
Mr. Peterson.
Commissioner Peterson, thank you for answering my road problems for that study session. I appreciate that. But I have one.
Sure.
I'm curious, at the time they submit their landscape proposal, who approves that?
Staff does.
The staff approves it?
Yeah. We would review it for conformance with the proposed and approved landscape plan as part of the conditional use permit, and also with the requirements from the handbook to make sure it complies with both of those. And as long as it's substantial compliance, we know that there's a little bit of variation between approval, but as long as it's substantially compliant, we would prove it as staff. If there was some wild change, which would require really a change to circulation and change buildings and stuff like that, they would have to come back to planning commission for review and approval of an alteration to the conditional use permit.
And then a follow-up to that question on the elevations of these dwellings, where you state the three materials, but who approves that? Are you gonna take this, or staff approves that also?
Staff approves that as well. Again, if there was a very large deviation, if the elevations changed entirely to a different building style and so forth, you know, we would determine if we felt it was substantial compliance is what we're looking for. And if it was outside of that, we would come back, or we would request to come back to planning commission for approval.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, this is a public hearing, and I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak? Okay, seeing none, I will close it and bring it back to the commission for comments. A motion? Anyone?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Brock here.
Mr. Brock.
I move to approve conditional use permit CU 18-0002, associated with PCN 18-0008, adopting findings C1 through C5, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, and subject to the five conditions of approval.
Commissioner Fewon, second.
I have a first and a second. Any comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Next, we'll move along to PCN 18-0009, conditional use permit to allow parking facility at 306 10th Street.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and Karen, Commissioners. I'm Karen Malby, Development Service Manager. Before you, it was a request for a conditional use permit to allow a parking facility on a site 42,000 square feet in size within our mixed-use district, the downtown Victorian Square area. It's located at 306 10th Street. It's this property outlined in cyan. It's at the northeast corner of 10th Street, right here, and C Street. This is a request for a conditional use permit to allow an existing non-conforming parking lot to be used as a park-and-ride facility, which would have shuttle pickup and drop-off on-site. The subject property or lot was previously used as a parking lot for the now-closed Bourbon Square, and prior to that, the Silver Club, locate, which was located, or is, the building's located at 1040 Victorian Avenue. Because the casino has been closed and the parking lot has not been used more than two years, the parking lot cannot be used as a parking lot, and requires a conditional use permit to operate as a standalone parking lot. There's a lot of parking lots there. The parcel is currently constructed as a parking lot with access off of 10th Street, which is, right here is the access point. They are proposing a total of 101 parking spaces. This is the site plan. The applicant is asking to use this parking lot as a park-and-ride facility, which would provide a shuttle service for an employer who's located in the Tahoe Reno Industrial Center. To review the five conditional use findings, first one, compliance with the comprehensive plan. Parking facilities are not generally a preferred use in our mixed-use district. However, this, which is, the mixed-use district is designed to promote density and non-vehicular modes of transportation. However, Goal C2 supports this conditional use permit finding, by facilitating alternative transportation to a major employer in the region. The park-and-ride facility will provide a shuttle service, a type of transit to this business, or to businesses. This reduces the trips on I-80 to the east of Sparks in support of policy RC9. In finding C2, which is the compatibility with the adjacent properties, the properties to the north and east of this property are single-family homes. The request is to reestablish a previously used site as a parking lot. The condition six requires that the shuttle service pickup and drop-off will be for the, be for the riders, park-and-ride only on the subject property. Condition seven and eight prohibits overflow parking onto the surrounding streets and restricts the use of the parking lot by the shuttle service users only. The intent of these three conditions is to reduce the potential impacts into the surrounding area. Addressing finding three, C3, which is impairment to natural resources, this site is graded and paved, and which was previously used as a parking lot, having no new net impacts on our natural resources. Addressing finding C4, which is identified impacts, the first impact I want to address is parking lot condition. The existing parking lot is, needs some maintenance, and therefore, we have put condition number five on this, requiring that they reseal the property, the parking lot, and restripe it. The next identified impact is the existing landscaping on that property has died. But because this use is being a temporary use, which the applicant is telling us of less than three years, the installation of landscaping is not being required. We felt that when they redevelop it, the landscaping would be there for a short period of time and then have to be removed. So, condition three requires the improvements to the parqueway, which would be along the streets here and here, to the adjoining streets, but not within the parking lot. Unless the parking lot is used beyond three years, then that condition requires that they install some landscaping. The next issue is overflow parking. Condition seven requires that the shuttle service users park only within this parking lot and not overflow onto the surrounding streets. Other, the next impact identified is other users using this parking lot. Condition eight addresses that, another concern is that the parking lot would be used by other people in the Victorian Square area, which then the shuttle users would not have parking, and they would end up overflowing onto the street. So, we've required condition eight, which requires that they provide some kind of security system to the approval of the administrator. The next impact is shuttle pickup and drop-off. Condition six requires that the pickup and drop-off only occur within the parking lot to eliminate congestion on the surrounding streets. And the last impact item is condition nine, which requires that the parking lot be fenced with a decorative fence, and the applicant is proposing to put wrought iron fencing there. The last finding is public notice, and this was published in the Reno Gazette Journal on March 22nd, 2008. Eighty-seven notices were sent to neighbors within 500 feet of the property. I did receive one email yesterday, which I have, or it might have been Tuesday now, I lost days, but I did forward that to all the planning commissioners. That was from Tom Young, the owner of the Great Basin. That concludes my presentation. We are recommending approval with nine conditions.
Thank you. Is the applicant here, and do they wish to speak?
I'm, I'm looking for you guys to.
Go ahead and come on up.
Absolutely.
I'm Jeff Holbrook with LandCap Investment Partners. We own the parking lot. We, a little bit of a background, maybe you don't care, but we bought all of that, all at one time. So, we bought the casino, the Silver Club, and this, and, you know, we developed the Silver Club into Square One. And, you know, we're not really in the parking lot business, we're in the housing business. So, it, as Karen spoke, to, our intent is really to not keep this as parking, just sitting there empty. And so, we were approached by this rather large employer on providing parking for them. So, we said, yeah, let's do it. So, we're putting some money into it, and we hope to have it ready in about two more weeks for them. And so, you know, for us, you know, like I said, we're in the multifamily and housing business, so we're not parking lot guys. So, we're just, this is definitely for us temporary. So, anyhow. So, we cleaned it up and gotta get it, put it to some use.
Great. Do any of the commissioners have any questions?
I have several. Oh, do you, go ahead, Commissioner.
Commissioner Reed?
For, I had a couple of questions for staff and then the applicant. I'm, in reading the letter from the Great Basin, it's, there appears to be some confusion, confusion on whether this is public parking or not, and it's not public parking. So, I'm wondering about how the process.
Yes, I did talk to Tom Young and clarified that. And he was misunderstanding. He read the notice that said parking facility, so he assumed it meant public parking. And maybe we should have done our notice and said park-and-ride. But I was using the terminology that is in our code, which is called a parking facility. So, I used that terminology in the noticing to be consistent with our code. But he did have a misinterpretation, and I did speak with him, and he understands now.
Then the other concern I have is typically, park-and-rides are not located in or near a downtown area. Is that correct? I'm just, my understanding is they're usually further out in a, near a major arterial, not in a downtown area.
I think park-and-rides can be located wherever they're needed, and apparently, this employer felt that this was a good location for them.
My other question is, do we know who's going to be parking, where the people are coming from, is where the, that are going to be using the parking facility?
No, that would be, that would be essentially confidential, because that's the employees of that company in the trick.
It just meant they're all, they're gonna be.
We have no idea where the people live.
Okay. And then, let's see. And then I wanted to know, and I don't know if you can answer that, if the parking lot would be available for special events like the Rip Hook Off, or Hot August Nights, or any other time, or is it strictly going to be used for this park-and-ride?
Yeah, that's not the intent. They are a 24/7 operation, so they are crying to get in there now. So, and they're a very large employer, and I think they're using a parking structure right across the street.
Yeah, they are using the C Street garage right now, and because the deco project's going in there, they have to stop using that facility. So, that's why they've approached Jeff and to use his property. So, it's in the same, I mean, it's across the street, essentially.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Commissioner Carey?
I think Commissioner Reed got all my questions.
It jumped the gun on you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, you're good?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner, just, questions for staff on the condition, Karen, on the condition of approval, say overflow parking, what, what are you guys envisioning on how that's gonna work? Because, yeah, during the special events, this parking lot's gonna be like a chicken that's outside on, in a hot summer day to the meat bees, you know, the meat bees are gonna be all over this place. What are you envisioning as far as the, um, security of going into that, and how do you, how do you control?
I'll let Jeff answer that.
But Karen, how do you, how do you control overflow parking? I mean, that's.
Well, the, we put that condition on there, because if we get complaints that the shuttle users are parking on the street, then that gives us some ability to go out and enforce it. But basically, we would have to operate on a complaint basis. Jeff may be able to address on what they're looking at for some security on there.
So, we're installing cameras, you know, we, we, the, the employer asked us to put in security cameras, they did not want a gate, and they've got basically three buses running, four pickup times and four drop-off times, starting at 5:00 AM, 7:00 AM, 5:00 PM, 7:00 PM, those are the pickup times, and the drop-offs are 6:40 AM, 8:40 AM, 5:00 PM, 6:40 PM, and 8:40 PM, and don't ask me why they have one extra drop-up, I have no idea, maybe for the people that forgot they needed to go home at night or something, I have no idea why. But, you know, there, as far as special events, we, we talked this over with them, and, you know, we may end up in those few times a year, eight different days or events or whatever, we may end up having a security guard there, just to keep other people out, but I believe this parking lot's gonna be full with their people, and I don't think, and we, we've owned this for several years now, and then we were constantly being asked by the Nugget to use it for overflow parking for them, so we were happy to do that. But, in this case, I think it's gonna be full all the time, I don't think there're gonna be a lot of extra spaces there.
And I, and I just wanted to clarify what they, I did drive by yesterday, and they were striping and sealing it, so.
I'm sure I'm gonna get a bill by about Friday.
They were all over.
So, and the lights are working, we've kind of spent a fair amount of money getting it ready for them, so, and fencing's been ordered, in fact, I've been pressing Karen here for a permit to get issued, so.
It's been approved.
Perfect, it's on record.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, this is a public hearing, do we have any requests to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, thank you very much, and bring it back to the commission. Comments, questions, motion? I'm gonna start calling on you guys.
I am, I'm just gonna.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make.
Yes, Commissioner Peterson.
I move to approve the conditional use permit CU-180003, associated with BCN-180009, adopting findings C1 through C5, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, subject to the conditions of approval, 1 through 9, listed in the staff report.
Commissioner Rock, second.
Okay, I have a first and a second, any comments? Okay, all in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Carey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, a comment, or two if I may. I don't think it's ideal to have a parking lot located in the middle of our industrial area, or redevelopment area, or a mixed-use district. I think in terms of goals and policies of our comprehensive plan, this use is not compatible with, with those uses. I, I also don't believe that, that we, as a city of Sparks, should be a parking lot for Tahoe Reno Industrial Park or any other major employer, doesn't support our land use goals or where we're going with, with our regional, with our, our plan. But I will agree with staff on, on the findings for, for this particular proposed conditional use request. I ha, I did have some concerns about the landscaping, I think my preference would be to have live landscaping, however, I think with the wrought iron fence, the zero scape that's gonna be going in, it's gonna be a nice improvement to, to the area. I, I do agree with, with what Tom Young brought up, with, with the commission, that we do need more parking down, downtown. I think with the DECO project going in, this has created a shortfall with those businesses along Victorian, and I, and I would encourage the applicant, if, to open this up for the general public, I think particularly for special events, it would be a nice addition and help advance our redevelopment goals. Just wanna put those comments on the record, I will be supporting the request, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Commissioner Carey, so I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, motion carries. Commissioner Peterson's asked if we can take probably about a 10, 15, probably about a 10-minute break before the next agenda item, so, we'll be back in, about 10 minutes, 20 after, okay? Okay, I'm gonna call the commission meeting for April 5th, back to order. And we are now going to discuss PCN-16-0050, and we're gonna start with DA-18-0001, Mr. Arnellis.
Chairwoman VanderWaal and members of the Planning Commission, I am Armando Arnellis, the Assistant Community Services Director for the city. If it's okay with the Chairwoman and the Planning Commission, I'd like to introduce all four of the, the items that are part of this PCN-0050.
Yes.
And, and then, I'm, and Chief Maples, Fire Chief Maples, will address the development agreement, and Karen Melby, your Development Services Manager, will address the annexation, Conference of Plan Amendment, and rezoning requests, and then we'll all be available for questions.
Perfect, so, I need to open, just say all of them, just open them one at a time?
Um.
Because we're presenting.
You can just read the top two lines and.
Okay.
Then state four requests.
Okay.
So, let me have the, this case involves a property located at 555 Highland Ranch Parkway, which is located just up to the west on Highland Ranch Parkway from the Pyramid Highway. It is outlined, the parcel is a single parcel, it's outlined in the, in the blue, cyan, as Melby refers to it. The, the property's, again, 387 acres in size, is a former aggregate mining site, you can see the, the, the impact of that on, on the site in the aerial photograph. It is largely not visible from either Highland Ranch Parkway or from the Pyramid Highway, as essentially, once you go up the road here, you are in, in a depression, in a, in a bowl-like environment. There is a paved access road, as shown here, from, from Highland Ranch Parkway. And, again, this case, PCN-160050, is comprised of four requests. The first one is DA-18001, which is a proposed development agreement, agreement between the City of Sparks, Jackling Aggregates LLC and QK LLC. In, in the instance of the development agreement, the Planning Commission's responsibility is to review it and to make a recommendation to the City Council regarding whether the development agreement is consistent with the comprehensive plan or not. The, the agreement would have to be approved by the City Council for it to take effect. The second part of the request is AX-160003, which is voluntary annexation into the City of Sparks. Upon annexation, the parcel shop would convert from a Washoe County zoning designation of general rural to a City of Sparks zoning designation of A40 or agriculture. The Planning Commission is responsible for making a recommendation to the City Council on annexation requests. The third part of this is MPA-17-0005, which is a comprehensive plan land use submission, comprehensive plan land use change request, to change its designation from open space, commercial, and employment center to intermediate dens, density residential and commercial. In case of the comprehensive plan request, as we've discussed in the past, the comprehensive plan is the Planning Commission's domain by and large, and so, it is your responsibility to approve or disapprove this request, and then the City Council would certify the change if, if you were to approve it. And then the fourth part is RZ-17-0006, which is a request to rezone the site from A40, which is agricultural, to S of 6, single-family residential, 6,000 square foot lots, and C2, which is general commercial, and the Planning Commission's role is to make a recommendation on the rezoning to the City Council. So, the reason for bundling the development agreement with the, with the other three requests, with the annexation, comp, plan amendment, and rezoning requests, is to provide the Planning Commission, the City Council, the public, and third-party reviewing agencies. Commission, the City Council, the public, and third-party reviewing agencies with an understanding of what's proposed for the site at the time that these requests are being contemplated. As you may recall, for example, on the 67-acre parcel to the south on Highland Ranch Parkway, the Planning Commission saw the annexation, master plan, and rezoning requests really without any basis in terms of anything definitive in terms of what the project would be. And so, there was also no ability to condition the approvals. And so, in this instance, the development agreement is a mechanism for conditions to be attached to the approvals, as would be done, for example, with a plan development handbook. They're different animals, if you will. A development agreement is not intended to be as specific or to address all the details, for example, architectural design standards that would be addressed in a PD handbook. Nevertheless, the development agreement, you know, in this instance, includes a land plan, includes an infrastructure plan, and by addressing those, both the uses and the infrastructure requirements, it enables the development agreement to serve as a mechanism for satisfying the so-called concurrency requirement in the regional plan, which calls for or requires that infrastructure and public services be addressed at the time that land use entitlements are considered. So, in terms of what's in the agreement, the agreement's key terms are summarized on pages five and six of the agreement. Section 2 is intended to provide the developer a degree of regulatory predictability for the duration of the build-out of the project. This has a long build-out. And so, it defines the rules and the fees that apply to the development of the project. Permitted uses and density are addressed in section 3.1, which specifies that between 1,200 and 1,800 residential units are permitted, which equates to a gross density of between 3.1 and 4.6 dwelling units per acre. It allows for single-family detached and attached units in the portion of the property for which S of 6 zoning is requested. And then, in the 13 or so acres where C2 zoning is proposed, all of the uses that are permitted in the C2 zoning district would be permitted. The required infrastructure improvements are addressed in section 3.2. This includes the off-site infrastructure, which is required at the developer's expense for the project. The required off-site improvements include sanitary sewer upgrades and flood control and drainage improvements. Also required are the widening of the Highland Ranch Parkway from the entrance to the project to the Pyramid Highway. So, essentially, from the intersection of Pyramid Highway to the entrance of the project, this lane would be required to be expanded to four lanes, four travel lanes, prior to the issuance of any building permits for any structures. And then, the development agreement also includes provisions that require that this intersection have certain improvements made to it that are recommended in the traffic study, which is one of the attachments to the staff report that was prepared by Selegi engineers. That traffic analysis was reviewed by both city engineering staff and the Nevada Department of Transportation, and both our staff and the NDOT staff concur with those recommendations. Those intersection improvements must be completed prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy for or final inspection of any dwelling unit in excess of 650 dwelling units. Instead, more simply, prior to the 651st certificate of occupancy or final inspection, those improvements would have to be made. That means that the developer is going to have to be, get started in terms of gaining approval from NDOT for those specific improvements well before they need that, right? So, they have to account for that lead-up time. The idea, again, is to maintain at least a level of service E at that intersection. Section 3.2 of the agreement also requires, per the determination of the city's fire chief, the construction of a second fire apparatus access road prior to the issuance of that 651st CFO or occupancy permit. And, as written in the development agreement, the second fire apparatus access road must be open for public use, a condition which Chief Maples will elaborate on following my presentation, and which I believe the developer has some concerns about, and, you know, it's up to him to address, or them to address their concerns about that. In addition, the development agreement specifies that all dwelling units and commercial structures intended for or to be used for human occupancy must be equipped with fire suppression systems, i.e., they must be sprinkled. And then, also, in terms of requirements from the fire department that have been incorporated in the development agreement, construction of all streets must comply with the design requirements that are set forth in the city's Site Development and Fire Prevention Policy Guide to the Approval of the Fire Chief. And then, section 3.11 constitutes the developers and property owners' petition to include the subject property in impact fee service area number one. And essentially, in the development agreement, they're agreeing to not withdraw the petition except as permitted in the agreement. Section 3.4 of the development agreement limits the total area to be cleared, graded, or disturbed to 225 of the 387 acres. So, as Karen will address in her presentation, the entirety of the site is being, or is proposed to be rezoned and to have its master plan or land use designation changed to those that I mentioned. We don't have anything that would be zoned for this proposal as open space or designated as such in our comprehensive plan. However, this agreement is the basis for limiting that to 225 of the 387 acres, which equates to about 58% of the site. So, that means that over 40% of the site is proposed to be left as open space. And, per the development agreement, the developer is required to convey with each final subdivision map the lands designated as open space to the entity responsible for maintenance of those lands, which would, you know, in all likelihood be the homeowners association. Section 4 permits the City Council to review the developer's compliance with the agreement at 12 months from the effective date, and it also requires the developer to report every 24 months after that initial review on the number of units approved and built, development densities, and status of the project. Section 6.1 specifies the duration of the agreement, which is 15 years. The agreement grants the developer the right to request one five-year extension subject to certain conditions. So, that's what's in the agreement, if you will, in terms of its primary terms. Before I address the, you know, how this development agreement is consistent with the comprehensive plan, which is, you know, what the Planning Commission's role is to opine on and make a recommendation to the City Council, Chief Maples is going to address the provisions in the agreement that the fire department is concerned about.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Chris Maples, and I'm the Fire Chief for the City of Sparks. This is the first time I've had the opportunity to speak before you. So, I wanted to address you tonight and express one of my concerns regarding the proposed quarry development. And that is, my primary concern is the limited access to this property. As currently proposed, the development only has a single dedicated public roadway in and out. The fire code gives me the authority to require secondary means of access for fire department vehicles. Beyond that, I've asked that this access road be open to public use to ensure two ways in and two ways out for both residents and emergency vehicles. My concern with the non-public fire access road is that it will not receive the same level of maintenance as a city street open for public use. For example, it won't be plowed when it snows. Additionally, it would be gated, and most importantly, emergency access roads are not typically designed for two-way traffic. While a fire access road may provide a way for fire department vehicles to enter the development, it will not be suitable for the rapid evacuation of residents should the need arise due to some natural or man-made disaster. Given the density and topography of the proposed development, my professional opinion is that an additional public access route into and out of the development is not only prudent, but also provides a much greater degree of safety for the residents. So, to rectify this, I propose that the development agreement be amended to include that the secondary access road be open for public use rather than designed solely for access by emergency vehicles. And it's my understanding that the developer has asked for this requirement to be removed. Now, I will say that, subsequent to me preparing my statement, Mr. Smith contacted me and offered or suggested some possible alternatives to address my concerns about the limited access to the property. They were very preliminary, so I'm not prepared to say whether or not those would be acceptable to be at this time, but I am willing to consider them in the future.
Okay. So, just to be clear, the development agreement as presented to you for your consideration this evening does include those requests of the fire department. So, moving on, in terms of the Planning Commission's role, with regard to the development agreement is to review the development agreement for consistency with the comprehensive plan. In staff's view, the applicable comprehensive plan goals and policies are MG5, which really has to do with the review of master plan amendments for sites over five acres, and requires the city to evaluate or cause to be evaluated impacts on facilities and services, or facilities and infrastructure, the impacts on services, public services, and then the proposed land use in relationship to existing land uses and the fiscal implications. And then, policy CF1, which says that when reviewing new development, the city will not approve an application unless the city's services can be provided at acceptable service levels. So, what we've attempted to do in the development agreement is to provide a framework for assuring that this project can comply with those requirements of the comprehensive plan. And so, it is staff's view that, for that reason, the development agreement itself is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So, that concludes my presentation on the development agreement. As I noted earlier, Ms. Melby is going to be going through the annexation, comp plan amendment, and rezoning requests, and then we'll all be available for questions.
Thank you.
I'm Karen Melby, Development Service. So, my first application I'm gonna review with you tonight is the annexation. This is the annexation map. They are proposing or requesting or petitioning to annex 387, approximately 387 acres. The first, what I wanted to review is the annexation findings, the three findings. Finding A is a conformance to the requirements of NRS 268. This property is contiguous to the city limits and is being requested by the property owner, which is in conformance with NRS 268. The next finding, A2, which is a conformance to the findings for annexation in our Sparks Municipal Code, actually consists of 10 sub-finding, so let me review those. The first one is the location of the property. The property is located north of Highland Ranch Parkway and is contiguous to the city on two sides. It'd be this to the south and then to the east. It is also actually contiguous, a tiny bit on the north, therefore making that being consistent with the location. The next one is logical extension of the city limits. This property, again, is contiguous to the city on two sides, and it is within the city's sphere of influence and existing utilities are in proximity to the property, which fits a logical extension of the city limits. Next one is the need for expansion. There is a housing shortage in the region, so this property will increase the single-family housing supply. D is the location of the existing and planned water and sewer service. Water service will be provided by the Truckee Meadows Water Authority, and sanitary sewer will be provided by the City of Sparks. Sanitary sewer service will be provided to the project via the Northwest Sanitary Sewer Interceptor located on the east side of the project, or actually, the east side of Pyramid Highway. The developer will be responsible for the construction of all new sanitary sewer lines, as well as an upgrade to the existing sanitary sewer lines that will connect the project to the northwest connector. The city sewer system, sanitary sewer model on the maximum unit count was, the maximum u... I don't know if it's getting late or...
It's okay.
But anyway, when we did the model, the sanitary sewer model, we modeled it at the 1,800, even though, like, the fiscal impact, they did it at 1,223. We did do the maximum number. And we also looked at the 13.4 acres of commercial. The results of the sanitary sewer model indicated that the developer will be required to construct capacity improvements to the existing sanitary sewer system located between the project and the northwest interceptor to maintain it at acceptable levels of service. Item E is the community goals that must be met. This project, staff believes, complies with Policies MG7, Goal H, and Policy CF1, because the annexation would provide additional land for housing development, has been in the city's sphere of influence since the year 2002, promotes Sparks' housing market, and a provision of the development agreement that the applicant is petitioning to be included in our ISFA number one, the impact service area, which, with this development, and will contribute to the construction of the fire station, storm drain, sewer, and parks improvements. F is the efficient and cost-effective provision of services. The property served by the sanitary sewer, which would be extended from the east side of Pyramid Highway, and the capacity improvements will need to be added to these facilities. The fire service would be from the fire station number four or through the automatic aid agreement with the Truckee Meadows Fire District. G, which is the fiscal impact analysis, the fiscal impact analysis that was provided, estimated that this annexation and the single-family development of 1,223, 20, single-family home units and 13 acres commercial will generate $47.3 million in revenue to the general fund and $33 million in general fund expenditures, resulting in an anticipated cumulative positive impact of $14.3 million over a 20-year analysis period. As for the road fund, the fiscal impact analysis estimates for a 20-year revenue of $3.3 million for the road fund and $14.9 million in expenditures. This estimate results in an anticipated deficiency of $11.5 million over 20 years due to the disconnect between the limited sources of revenue available for the road fund and the high cost of street maintenance and repair. This is not a unique situation throughout the city, and especially for this development. Combining the net positive for the general fund of $14.3 million and the net of the road fund at $11.5, this produces a project positive fiscal impact of approximately $2.8 million over the 20-year analysis period. H, which is the Washoe County, the city did email or did send a packet to Washoe County, and we have not received any comments from Washoe County. I creates, I is, does it create any islands? Excuse me. This annexation will not create any islands, and is since contiguous to city limits. J, other factors. Before any tentative maps can be reviewed by the city, the applicant must prepare and submit a slope analysis per the Sparks Municipal Code 20.04.11, which governs slopes, hilltops, and ridges, delineating the developable portion of this property. Addressing finding A3, excuse me a second, which is a conformance to the comp plan as within the sphere of influence and the seven-year annexation program. The City of Sparks initially exerted planning jurisdiction by including this area in our sphere of influence in the year 2002. The city's annexation program did expire in 2015. However, NRS 268.2670 allows for the City Council to consider annexed properties without an annexation program if it is contiguous to the city limits and the annexation is requested 100% by the property owners. Both of these requirements are satisfied with this request for annexation. The last finding is public notice. Again, this notice was published in the Reno Gazette Journal on March 27, 22, 2018. We noticed 700 property owners within 750 for a total of 50 property owners. Now, I'd like to address the comprehensive plan. Now I'd like to address the comprehensive plan amendment. They are amend, they're requesting, this map, the existing is on the top and the proposed is on the bottom. So they are requesting to amend 4.3 acres of a commercial, which is the little half-moon there of commercial, 85 acres of employment center, and approximately 298 acres of open space. Two, as shown in the lower graphic, 200, they are requesting to add 13.4 acres of commercial, and then the balance of the property, which is 373 and a half acres for intermediate density residential. The DA, though, or the development agreement, does limit the total area to be graded, cleared, or disturbed to 225 acres, or as Armando said, 58% of the property. The next, there are four, four findings for the comprehensive plan. The first one is the compliance with the regional plan. Staff feels that it complies with goals 1.1, 2.3, 3.5, because it is within our TMSA, the Sparks Municipal Code, and also the development agree, restricts the area that can be disturbed with the slope analysis. As previously discussed, it also will be included in the ISFA number one, which will contribute to the construction of the fire station, storm drain, sewer, and park improvements, along with the construction of capacity improvements to the intersection of Highland Ranch Parkway, and then also improvements from, of Highland Ranch Parkway from Pyramid Highway to the entrance of the project. This project does, does not, let's see, the project does trigger, I guess would be the word, three of the criteria for regional significance. The first one is that the project is proposed to be more than 625 units at the range of 1,200 to 1,800 units. The traffic in the, trigger for regional planning, a regional project is 600, I mean 6,250, and they're projecting 11,000, approximately 11,000 average daily trips. The sewer generation standard is 17,500 gallons per day, and it's estimated that this project would generate 378,000 gallons per day. Therefore, they have triggered three of the regional project, projects of significance of, so that when this project is forwarded to regional planning, they will have to also look at as a project of regional significant, and to comply, compliance with their plan. The next finding, which is CP two, CPA two, which is the implementation goals of the comprehensive plan. Staff feels that this complies with goal MG two, policy MG five, policy C one, goal H two, and policies RC 22 and RC 23. Because this will add lands of, a mix of residential and commercial uses, and as discussed previously, the fiscal impact analysis projects a net positive fiscal impact, it will be included in the ISFA number one development with contribute, contributions to the improvements in the Spanish Springs area. It will, has a provision of additional lands for housing, and a slope analysis will be required per the Sparks Municipal Code, housing, I mean hillside section of the zoning code. Finding C three, which is compatible with surrounding land uses. The subject property is located on the west side of Pyramid Highway, north of Highland Ranch Parkway. The Kylie Ranch North Plan Development is on the east side of Pyramid Highway. It has 157 acres designated as commercial, including a site proposed hospital. None of the commercial uses planned for the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development have been developed to date. The areas to the north are large, single-family properties. To the west are vacant lands with steep slopes. The subject property was formerly mined for aggregate. The single-family homes and the, and the commercial as proposed in this project will be more compatible with the surrounding land uses than the previously mining operation. The last comprehensive plan finding is the public notice. This was published in the Reno Gazette Journal on March 22. And we had a neighborhood, or the applicant had a neighborhood meeting on February 20, 2018. There were 13 people that attended that meeting with comments and lots of questions. The next item is the rezoning request. When this property would be annexed into the city, it'll come in as A40 or agricultural. That would be the entire 373.48 acres. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property to single-family 6,000 or SF six, and also commercial. The commercial would be located along Highland Ranch Parkway. Staff report has included a table which summarizes the permitted zoning uses by zoning district. I will not review that tonight.
Thank you.
If, yeah. If the comprehensive plan amendment is not approved by the planning commission tonight, then the rezoning cannot be approved. There are three findings for zoning. The first one is the consistency with the comprehensive plan. As I previously discussed under finding CP two, the staff believes that this finding can be made, but only if the comprehensive plan amendment is approved. Zoning C two, which is consistent with the surrounding existing land uses. Again, as discussed under comprehensive plan finding three, the rezoning is consistent with the commercial and residential developments designations in the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development, and also Washoe County to the north, the large lots, residential lots to the north. Finding Z three, which is public notice, the notice was published in the Reno Gazette Journal on March 22, and we sent out 50 notices to property owners within 750 feet of the property. Staff is recommending approval based on the findings as discussed under each of these three requests. I would like to make a reminder that you will have to make separate motions for each one of the four requests before you tonight. That concludes our presentation. Armando, Chief Maples, and myself are available for questions.
Yes, Chief Maples.
I just want to clarify one thing before you guys move on. Karen referenced an automatic aid agreement that I have with Truckee Meadows. That agreement was negotiated prior to the time that this development was contemplated. I have had no discussions with Chief Moore whether or not that automatic aid agreement would apply to this property.
Thank you for clarification, appreciate that. Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak?
Move out of here.
Good evening. For the record, Mike Riley with Rubicon Design Group, representing the project applicant. Scott Christie and Blake Smith, the applicants, are with me tonight, along with Paul Solagi, the project traffic engineer. I think staff did a very thorough job and a great job in the staff report, analyzing the findings and explaining the project. We're here to answer any questions you might have tonight. But before we get to that, I would like to touch on Chief Maple's comments in regards to the fire. We are currently considering and analyzing alternatives to address the chief's concerns, and we'll continue to work with him to make sure that we can come to a, to a common ground on resolving the secondary access issue.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay. So I'm going to open each one of these up for discussion. So going to open for public hearing DA 18-0001. And we, okay, so call for anybody that wants to speak?
Yes.
Okay. So do we have any requests to speak on DA? Mr. Cole, which part, okay, before I have you come up here, which part of the application would you like to talk about? Or just go ahead and come up, and let's have you discuss the whole.
All of it.
Yep, there you go. I'll let you address the whole thing. There you go. Go right ahead.
My name is Rock Cole. I'm a property owner adjacent to the north. And, you know, when we bought our properties, we were told this is Washoe County rural, and would remain that. And now, all of a sudden, it's becoming high-density housing. 18 years ago, or whatever, when the quarry applied for a permit there, we were told that this was a protected ridge line above our homes, and that nothing could, a road, a fence, a home, nothing could be built on that ridge line. And, and when I look at their map, Village Five and Six is infringing on that ridge line. And if you look in that, in this document right here, page 21, policy RC 23, it requires the new development to preserve and protect amenities with unique features. And the comment is, the quarry is a, is unique because it can provide for an enclave-type development pattern that preserves the ridge lines and focuses development in areas that were previously part of the aggregate quarry, or are well-suited for development. I didn't, I couldn't make the previous community meeting, but I called Mike Riley, and he assured me that all the building was down in the flat, that nothing was going, it was too steep, and nothing was going up on the hills. But now that you look at their map, there is substantial development on that ridge line. And I would think with 390 acres to build on, they could remove that ridge line building and keep it down in what they proposed. And I mean, I know I'm, I'm nobody, but I'm speaking for a lot of the residents there. And by the way, that 750 feet barely covers two properties. You know, it doesn't reach out to everybody, because I called some people, and nobody was aware of this. And like I said, we were promised in previous commission meetings that that was a protected ridge line. That would be my first. The other one is traffic on Pyramid is already atrocious. I don't know if any of you guys live out there, but it's ridiculous. And this little improvement to Highland Ranch Parkway does nothing for Pyramid. And, and this is a lot of housing, a lot going in, and that concerns me. And I guess that's pretty much it. I'm just, I would just appreciate if you could just make them keep it off the ridge line and give us a little buffer zone between what was supposed to be rural and now is becoming high-density. And it's right, it's on the property line, it's not that big of a deal. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks for sticking around.
Yes. Do we have any other requests to speak? Yes, sir. And then if you'll just fill out a request to speak when you're done. You can get it over with the secretary when you're done.
My name's Bradley Paul Ellie, and my ox is also getting gored on this project. And the problem is, I have the 20.5-acre lot that's directly north, right next to the one that's on the corner, the northeast corner. That's zoned one-third acre residential. And the Lansing Group has over 200 acres that they're going to develop. They have nice development out there. It's close to the high school. You can look down and see the high schools from there. You can walk to the high school if you want to, ride a bike maybe. It is steep, but if you ever go out there and you walk it, where, if they, if you could put the map up of their parcel, I can see it in front here, but the topography, I share, I think, Mr. Cole's concerns. My property goes to the ridge top, and what they want to do, they want to put in a congested area right below my property, 6,000-square-foot lot properties? That's really dense. And what'll happen in the winter, if there's any kind of inversion going on, and they allow any kind of burning to go on, all of these 6,000-acre lot residences, all that foul air is going to go up onto my property. So I get to smell all this byproduct of progress on my rural lot. So I'm not real happy about that. I, I don't object to them building something. I'm not trying to say, don't let them annex, but I'm trying to say, be reasonable. When you go up there and you look at the lot, you'll notice on a good day, you don't hear much road noise. On a bad day, when the wind's blowing up that, that, if you look at the, you can't see it from there, but the, the lay of the land there is, it, it's an echo chamber for the freeway, which I call it the freeway, or the death trap for all the people who get killed by the drunks coming back from Pyramid Lake. So that's going to be more congested, you're going to hear more traffic, they're going to put in, they're going to have to put in some sort of stop light system or something there. So you're going to have that freeway come to a stop right there, and I'll hear even more motorcycles than I do now there. But you also get, besides the, besides the noise that flows up there in that echo chamber, you also get a very windy area most days. Coming up in a month, when the wind's blowing, you will, you'll be up there, and when I originally got this, I thought, boy, this would be a great place for a wind turbine, because the wind blows a lot up there. It blows the, it blows everything. Is that my three minutes? No?
Yes, that's your time.
Oh, well, sorry, anyway.
You can go ahead and wrap it up.
Well, I'll just say thank you for your time, but please, this congestion right below my lot is not compatible with the area. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you'll see the, if you'll fill out a form for us, we greatly appreciate it. Are there any other comments? Yes, sir?
Yeah, I didn't fill out a form.
That's quite all right. You can go ahead and speak, and if you'll say your name and your address, and then, yes, if you'll please fill out one when you're done.
Yeah, my name is Greg Ellie, and I'm the managing partner of Pyramid West Vista's, which is 20 acres adjoining to the north here. And my concerns, I'm basically echoing what you've just heard, the density, 6,000 square feet a lot is, I just think that's too small, and it's going to lead to too much traffic. The traffic's bad already, the noise. People have the right to build on their land, but let's try and do it more compatibly, I think. And that's, that's basically it. I just think it's just too dense, and it's just overwhelming the existing area. So those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Also, one ask that you fill one out, too. Thank you.
My name is Reeve McElroy. I live at 7895 Petrino Way, to the north of the property. We have multiple residents over there that are on 11 and 12-acre parcels, and I am just echoing what everybody else is saying here. This is a high-density project adjacent to what we all thought was, at one time, and is still, rural areas, small ranchettes, whatever you want to call them. This is going to impact all those areas to the north and to the west, and it's going to affect Highland as well. The road improvement of Highland Ranch Parkway to the entrance, as it was shown earlier, I feel is very inadequate. They should be improving Highland Ranch Road all along that property line, because it's, there's, there's quite a bit of traffic on Highland Ranch Road now coming down to Pyramid. That little bit of improvement isn't going to do anything for all the other traffic that's coming into this high-density exiting point. I also have an issue, being an ex-fireman, sorry, with the fire danger. You can already see where the fire had impacted that area 15 years ago. You've got to have adequate services for that many houses. You should be building a fire station in that location as one of your commercial things. That would be something I would think you'd be looking at. I don't begrudge development, I am a builder, so I want them to do what they need to do. I am also concerned about the ridge line and how it impacts our properties to the north, and wanting to keep the houses down. Corey Pitt isn't, I've been up there on my horseback, on my horseback and quad. It's already recut right now at a very steep slope, but I'm sure they're going to redevelop it to fit all those houses a little differently. But I would like to see the houses stay off the ridge line completely, and that way you're keeping that density more intact to itself. I'm basically just voicing what everybody else is saying. And I, and you do need to give notice not 700 feet from a property. This is a huge development, you need to go much further out, you need to hit the Desert Springs area that's impacting us to the north, you need to hit the Highland area up to the west, you need to get better notification. I found out about this. I found out about this yesterday, and I'm here now, so I think that needs to be improved. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, thank you for your time. We have, many of us, they're objecting to this, I suppose. My property also abuts the proposed.
Can you state your name and your address, please?
Mike Eastman, Ten Mack Road. I, I think in a shortcut, you've been had, I think you, you have not been well-explained what kind of property this, this quarry is. If you looked at the top of it, you'd probably first say, we're not going to build houses here. But of course, they can cut whatever they want to cut. It is a beautiful piece of property, it overlooks all of Sparks and all of Reno. Fantastic views up there, and of course, people are going to want to build up there. But what it does is impact our city in a way that we don't, don't really like. I don't think, I don't think any of you, if you lived where we live, would like that. You're going to have an entire beautiful ridge completely covered with houses in, in a way that is going to require them to do a lot of chopping and cutting of the hillside. It's going to have to come down a little bit, it's going to have to be flattened and leveled and all those kinds of things. And I would encourage all of you to go out there and take a look at the site, both as a, a, an overview, a, a beautiful part of the city, that you really don't, and it's fairly tall, I mean, it's a fairly, fairly good-sized ridge. So I don't want to repeat everything everybody else has said, but I don't think they did good, good thoughts on anybody to the north, only again, sending notification out to seven hundred and fifty people. Everybody out there has ten-acre lots. So ten-acre lots, you don't get in past the row, first row of people. You don't get all the rest of the people out there with ten-acre lots, so they don't even know this is happening. So I would encourage that to be done. First, tell everybody else out there, and all of those people are, I believe, under the same assumptions that, that Rock mentioned earlier, that we are all under the assumption that this was a protected ridge. And all of them believe it's a protected ridge, and they're going to be shocked when they have to come out their front door and see this giant row of houses. Maybe each individual house is pretty, but a giant row of houses sitting on the top of a ridge in the middle of Sparks is not attractive. We intentionally bought in this rural area for that protected area, and we would certainly like to see it stay that way. I think all of us understand development has to go. I don't know that all of this Kylie Ranch and all this valley area that is being built, it looks like there are thousands of room, thousands of lots left for houses. It appears on any map, you just look at it, and there's, there's so much plans for that whole area out there, I can't imagine that they have to have this quarry and chop down one of the most beautiful areas in the city for views and for appreciation. We could do better with things like parks, trails, those kinds of things for public use areas. The, I would like to re, re-hit on that one big area, is the traffic. I don't think, again, I don't know where you all live, but if you live on north Pyramid, north of, of this Highland Park Ranch, that traffic is particularly in the mornings, obviously mornings and evenings reverse, it is just horrible, and it'll take forever to get down there. If you add eighteen hundred more homes and families that are trying to commute, sometimes two people each, all about the same time of day, it's just going to be bogged down and none of us can be able to get anywhere. So I'd appreciate it if you would really, really reconsider this and take a, take a good look at where this property is, take a, take a look at the elevations, the terrain out there, take a look at how wonderful it can actually be, and for, for some other purpose than uglifying it with a bunch of houses on top of it. Thank you for talking.
Thank you. Are there any other requests to speak? Yes, ma'am. That's fine. Just state your name and your address, and then when you're done, if you'll fill out the form, that'd be wonderful.
My name is Patricia Metz, and I'm at seven three three five Star Hill, which is the south part of this area where we all have these, the ten acres at least, ranches. And mine is right up there against this proposed property, the top of my property. And I bought it in two thousand and one, and I was under the impression, under the impression that nobody would be ever building back there. What I'm also concerned about this time, at this time, is that so-called berm between, that, if there is one, between my place and others that are up this mountain that we have there. It, it looks like we're, we're going to be touching right where the proposed building will be. Also, at one time, with the, the pit, I'll call it, if, they were also in, in agreement to never even have any dust coming up, you know, that was their agreement with people on the north side of where the pit is, which would be where I, I live. I'm also concerned about fire situations, that they would have to have very good coverage. That is very dense, what they're proposing, and lots of people would be up there over, over our mountain. No, we did not plan to have houses right up on that ridge. I, if it goes through, I would really hope that they would handle it better to be in concern of the people that live to the north. There's all these acreage, this acreage of ranches, and most of the people that live in the whole area don't even know they're there. So I am concerned about this whole proposal and also the traffic on Highland Parkway. I go up that highway many times to go over to on the other side of three ninety-five even, and people drive pretty crazy on it, and with more people going into that proposed construction, I, I think it'd be pretty dangerous. But anyway, I think there's a lot of things to look at, and it's not a simple matter. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, we appreciate you staying. Okay, with that, is there anyone else that requests to speak? Okay, all right. Again, we're going to take each one of these separately, so I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to bring back to discuss DA one-eight dash zero zero one. So do any of the commissioners have questions, comments regarding the development agreement? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question for staff regarding the development agreement. Looking through section six point one, that requires the maintenance of the, the open space o, o, on this property. I think one of the concerns that I have, and I appreciate Chief Maples being here, is wildfire. I think some, we had some public comment expressed to that, too. Given the topography of, of the site, I could see that wildfire being a, a serious issue. My question about section six point one requiring the maintenance, does this section of the agreement require, you know, the HOA or whoever is, is, is created for that to maintain defensible space for the, for the homes that, that are built?
The, the development agreement does not specifically address the issue of defensible space, Commissioner Carey. I mean, I would, I would refer the question in part to, to Chief Maples, but typically, once, once the developable areas are truly defined, as you, as you know, this is, this is a conceptual land use plan, I would, scroll down. This is a, a preliminary slope analysis. The, the section of the agreement that addresses slope analysis and development constraints basically requires an acknowledgement on the part of the developer that there are slope constraints. Ultimately, this slope analysis will have to be refined, and the land plan updated to reflect the slope analysis. That's a, that's a step towards ultimately the, that process of tentative and final maps, where the areas that are in fact to be designated open space and dedicated to the HOA or whatever the entity is responsible for maintaining and for the development agreement, we, we can start to look at the issue of that through that tentative map process. There, it's my understanding, Chief Maples, that the international fire code has defensible space provisions.
So currently in the city, we don't have any type of ordinance that regulates the wildland-urban interface. And the reason for that is, historically, we haven't been developing out in these areas, we've been more of an, a, an urban area. I, I believe with DeAndrea, that was the first one where we required the homeowners to, the homeowners association to maintain a defensible space on, on their property. So like Armando said, this is all very preliminary now, but I would assume we would incorporate something like that into this.
Thank you, Chief, appreciate that, that answer. My other question I had concerning the development agreement, one of the key provisions of this development agreement is that it allows for the property owner to petition to be included within I F S A number one. And my, my, my question is about that, is with the proposed land, land uses on, on this site where it takes up the entire site, where we have, you know, it's all single, it's all single-family, it's all commercial, how does those, do those proposed acreages affect the calculations for our next I F S A update? Would we just take the two twenty-five acres that are developable, or would we take the entire acreages and calculate that?
We, we will be looking at development units for that purpose. So as Mr. Martini explained to you in, in some detail on, in his presentation, I need to go into some detail. The, you know, we'll be looking at, at the number of residential units. Any commercial space will be, will be taken into account as well. And so it's not the, it's not the acreage per se, it's the development units that will be taken into account for purposes I F S A, I F S A number one. The other point I would make, just as, for purposes of clarification, is that by virtue of this agreement, they are petitioning. So this, this agreement, if approved by, by both parties, by the city council, is the petition.
Appreciate the clarification, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions? Commissioner Pughans.
Commissioner Pughans. And so, Armando, in the development agreement, you're talking about the widening of the four travel lanes from Pyramid Highway two on Highland Ranch to the, on the map, it was called the Unknown Road, as they name that. Are there any kind of, with that development agreement, when you have, say if this does go through, you have eighteen hundred homes coming down, there's no kind of traffic facility there at that Unknown Road and Highland Ranch Parkway intersection, would there, could there be anything in that development agreement that would trigger something for a, some kind of traffic control at that intersection? Because the majority of those people are probably going to be taking a left through that coming down Highland Ranch, is that a?
I'm going to ask Amber Sosa to address that question, if you would.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, for the record, Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager for the City of Sparks. The traffic study provided for this, for the Highland Ranch Parkway and the project access intersection, does provide for a three-legged traffic signal-controlled intersection.
Thank you. And can we, can we, we had some discussion about Highland Ranch, and maybe this is from, we were talking about Highland Ranch being done all the way. I think there was some public comment about improving that all the way. Can you explain possibly where that may not be able to do via the development agreement with improving the whole road on that? Mr. Martini, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission, John Martini, Community Services Director. So as we've, we've talked many times, as we look at development-related issues, when we look to a development to make a substantial public improvement, we are bound by basically two factors. One is a nexus, meaning do you have a reason to require an, an approval or a, an exaction is what it is? It could be improvement of a road, addition of a signal, building a flood control channel, whatever the project we're looking at seems to require. The second one is called proportionality. So we have a duty to, if we decide we have a nexus, to require a developer to do something that's typically an off-site improvement. What is the proportional effect of that development on the object we're looking at? So in this case, Highland Ranch Parkway. Certainly, as the project's proposed today, now we've heard discussion about two forms of access, and, and the chief and I will be working with a developer to figure that out. As of right now, you're looking at a project that, that has one way in and one way out, so it will certainly be utilizing, as we, we sit tonight, all of the traffic from this project will utilize Highland Ranch Parkway to either come in or out of the project. So you have a nexus, we do. As we looked at this project over the last eighteen months, working with a developer, that was clear. Amber Sosa and your city engineer, John Erickson, with conjunction with Mr. Slaggy's work, looked at what the impacts are, you've got the numbers in your report, the development agreement requires a certain amount of upgrading of Highland Ranch. That is the proportional share. That's where we landed. It is all, from the project entrance to Pyramid Highway, the effects on the roadway going forward are completely attributable to this project. Now certainly, there's going to be some growth to the west in Sun Valley that likely will be coming over, but it is probably de minimis in comparison to looking at an eighteen-hundred unit subdivision utilizing this road. So to answer your question, yes, we can, but it has to be proportional. So to the question asked tonight, why not just pave the road all the way to Sun Valley, I guess would be the case? We could. However, their proportional share, let's say it costs a hundred dollars to, to do that improvement, it's probably more like a couple of million bucks, their share would be, say, four hundred thousand of that couple hundred million, or two million dollars. Public has to come up with the rest. As we sit here today, Highland Ranch Parkway is with, you do this annexation, a portion of it will be owned now by the City of Sparks, the rest remains in Washoe County. The two entities would have to come together in conjunction with RTC to fund projects. So that can hang a developer up while public funding is being found. The easiest way to do this is to have them condition through this development agreement to make their proportional share of that upgrade to foreign lanes on Highland Ranch Parkway, subject to the conditions in the development agreement. That's a very long-winded way to say, no, we can't just pave the whole thing, or require them to pave the whole thing. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Commissioner Reed?
I have a question. I have a question for the applicant. And by the way, Commissioner Pughans and I did have the opportunity to take a field, a rather bumpy field trip around the project site, so thank you, Mr. Christie, for that opportunity and sharing your plans for the property. I had a question regarding the quarry area and the fill. Can you describe the flood mitigation plans at that site?
I'm going to let somebody that's much more intelligent than I answer that question.
Yeah, good evening, for the record, Scott Christie with QK. So currently, there are some, some drainage issues out there that exist today with this development. We're not changing the drainage pa, pattern at all. We will be providing improvements that are going to improve the situation. We're working with staff to potentially improve the situation at the Highland Ranch Pyramid intersection, to improve the, the culverts that are there today, as well as drainage structures coming down Highland Ranch Parkway. Does that answer your question?
Vaguely.
Well, what can I be more specific about?
You had, when we were driving, you had mentioned some sediment basins and some extra hydraulic measures.
Yeah, that, that's all included in what we would do along Highland Ranch Parkway. So there is a sediment, sedimentation issue that, that's been around a long time. We've actually been working in other areas in the city to, to help mitigate that. And part of what we would do is to add some, some sedimentation control, and that's part of the problem I, I, I referenced there at the Highland Ranch Pyramid intersection. With the improvements in the infrastructure we would put in, we would, we could help mitigate that problem. Yep.
Any else have any questions? Okay. I just have one question. Mr. Arnales, if you could address noticing, before we move on, please.
So we notice per the requirements of state law, which are reflected in our municipal code as well. You know, we've often thought to ourselves, you know, sometimes it would practically speaking, make sense to notice a larger area. We've had that conversation with our legal counsel, and, you know, it, it really raises the question of, why did you do, if, if you, if you don't comply, if you don't do noticing in compliance with state law and our municipal code, any time in the future when you deviate from that, you know, you're going to have to justify why, and why this time and why not some other time for some other project. So upon the advice of the legal counsel, we comply with state law with regard to noticing. So, upon the advice of the legal counsel, we comply with state law with regard to noticing.
Can you explain what state law says so that, because I think we have residents here that, so that they understand how noticing happens?
Yeah. So, for example, for the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Amendment, if you go to that finding, CP four, the noticing was done, there was, there's a requirement on, for, for a neighborhood meeting, which is the applicant's responsibility. And then, let's not in here specifically, let me, let me look at the annexation one.
Karen Melby, Development Service Manager. The noticing that the, for the neighborhood meeting is 750 feet by state law. So, the applicant did notice within 750 feet of the property. Annexations require 750 feet and also the zone change are all 750 feet. And the applicant received the notice for the neighborhood meeting from the City of Sparks. So, it was the same notice list that was used for the neighborhood meeting was also used for the annexation request and also the rezoning.
And so, there's a, and there's a provision, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Melby, that, you know, you go out a certain distance or...
Yeah.
The greater of a certain distance or a minimum number of property owners.
Which is 30.
Which is 30. So, in the case of, in this case, for example, the 750 produce 50, 50 property owners.
I appreciate that clarification. Thank you. Mr. Rayly, can I have a question of you, please? And I don't, I don't know if you can answer or not. Were you at the public meeting?
I was.
At the neighborhood meeting?
Yes, I was.
Okay. Can you synopsize what the people that attended, what their feedback was?
I think it kind of mimics what you heard here tonight in terms of density was a concern. Also, one issue that wasn't brought up tonight that was raised at the meeting was concern of potentially an access to the north through, up into that, to that area. We addressed that. And, you know, basically, essentially how the project would be laid out, the ridgeline issues and the density.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and I will...
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Fueens.
If I could have the chief come back up. So, in the, we're still talking about the development agreement.
Yes, we are.
Yep. Second fire access road that you're really talking about, you know, as I drive around City of Sparks, and there's quite a few access roads currently in our city that are not, can you just tell the differences between what those are per a public road and a fire access road? And why you think in this development, and you're, I think you addressed it a little bit, but in your professional opinion, why that access road is not going to be good enough?
So, it's kind of what I talked about earlier.
Yeah.
Okay? It's not open all the time. Okay? So, if there's an emergency and there's only one way out, everybody funnels down the one road. If it's a public road, the secondary access that we're talking about, there's another, there's an alternative way out. This is also a very large development with a large number of units. A lot of the access roads we have around here work for much smaller developments. Okay? My concern would be sometimes they're not built to accommodate two-way traffic. They're not plowed, like I said. They're not regularly maintained. This area, you have some steep hillsides that you're aware of. You could have rock slides if nobody's out there removing the rocks and we have to access it. That hinders our ability to get in and out. The lock gate does the same thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the development agreement? Comments? Okay. I'm going to call in somebody if somebody doesn't step up, so let's go. Come on. Someone want to make a motion on the development agreement for me?
Madam Chair, I'd be happy to make some comments. I'm not sure if I'm prepared to make a motion, but...
Okay, go right ahead.
Maybe my comments will spur some more...
There you go.
Discussion.
There you go.
Certainly, with respect to the proposed development agreement, I certainly appreciate the work of, of staff. I think there's a lot of good things in this development agreement and that it will provide some good, some good stuff to help out our infrastructure needs out there. I do have a lot of concerns with the proposed land use changes, in my opinion. I'm just one commissioner up there. I don't believe that these proposed changes are consistent with the comprehensive, or the proposed development agreement. Got ahead of myself.
Yes.
The proposed development agreement is consistent with the comprehensive plan. This site has been designated as business park and employment center for many years now. I believe that that's an appropriate land use for, for this section. I think from the land use point of view, I think there's more impacts from what the proposed land uses in this, in this development agreement are more impactful to the adjacent residences. I don't find that it's, it's compatible. So, I won't be, I do not support this development agreement.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Fueens.
Commissioner Fueens. A little bit more discussion on that. I'm actually in favor of the development agreement. I think even though we do hear, development is something that, that our city's growing and it is something that is doing. And whether or not, I definitely hear concerns of citizens that own 10 acres to the, to the north. But development is happening. Our city's growing. This is giving, getting an ability for a housing shortage that we sound like we desperately, well, it doesn't sound like we desperately are in need of. It's giving a vehicle for funding for some capital improvements that are definitely needed in this area. And so, I think you've got to look at really, where do we want our city to grow? This is an ability to get an agreement with the developer to be able to fund items that are in desperate need in our, in our city. So, I'm in support of this in the development agreement. And I think just the whole nexus of getting it, or concurrency with the agreement, I think is a, is a great plan. I think that staff's done a great job with doing that. And, you know, we've had, we've definitely looked at annexation in the past and have not been favorable on it because I think developers did not meet with staff and get really the plan going. And I think that by them doing that and getting things going down the road in the right direction at the same time is a really good idea for our city.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Thanks. Anybody prepared to make a motion?
Commissioner Fueens, I'm ready to make a motion. For the development agreement, I moved, find the proposed development agreement associated P C N one-six dash zero-zero-five-zero, consistent with the Sparks Comprehensive Plan, and to move forward to recommendation approval to the city council.
Commissioner Brock, second.
Okay. I have a first and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and make a comment. I am going to support the development agreement. I appreciate the time that staff has put into it. And I do understand when you live in unincorporated Washoe County and then all of the sudden we have land that then is concurrent to be annexed into the city, that there are different rules in the city than there are in unincorporated county. And unfortunately, that is how growth is happening and we're growing and we need to make sure that we grow responsibly. And I feel that with staff working with the developer, that they're putting a plan in place. It is a 20-year build-out, so it's not something that when we start doing this, that we're going to start seeing sticks in the air tomorrow. So, there are steps that have to happen in order for this to come to fruition. So, with that, I'll call all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Motion carries. Okay. Next, we'll move along to A X one-six dash zero-zero-three, the voluntary annexation. Commissioners, do we have any comment, comments? Anything else?
Yeah, I do on, on, on the annexation. So, we're talking about services. And mainly, I think maybe Mr. Martini's best to answer this. I asked this in the study session and, you know, we're talking about, we had the sewer study done, and I think this was included in the sewer study, if I was correct? Or am I correct?
Yeah. So, the, the property was initially included in the sewer study per its Comprehensive Plan, which, as Commissioner Carey pointed out earlier, was professional office. It has been remodeled, including the proposed development densities that the developer has requested and is reflected in the development agreement that you just voted on. So, yeah, it's included. It, the, the, as, as Armando pointed out in, in his, or Karen actually did. So, the Northwest Interceptor, the big line that runs all the way out to, up past North of La Pasada, has, has capacity to handle this proposed development. There are some improvements that the developer will be 100% responsible for to upgrade between this property and the interceptor, which lies on the kind of eastern boundary of the Kylie North development. So, that's a cost completely borne by the developer to upgrade those existing lines that don't have enough capacity, but big pipe does.
I guess the line has capacity.
The interceptor does, which is, which is included in Impact Fee Service Area One.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
What about where it comes down to the river? The facility?
Yeah. We're good all the way to the river. All, actually, all the way to Tom Wharf.
So, the, the facility itself has capacity to...
So, when we speak to Tom Wharf...
Yes.
Tom Wharf has a permitted capacity that is both, it has a hydraulic capacity rating of about 44 million gallons a year. As the commission knows, we also have a waste load allocation requirement on the river, which the, the big three are the limited nitrogen, phosphorus, and phosphorus and total dissolved solids. As you all well know, our nitrogen discharge to the river has been creeping up. So, your Spark staff, in conjunction with the staff at Reno, since we both jointly own and operate the plant, we're working on the next upgrade at Tom Wharf right now. So, there, Sparks does have some remaining capacity, as we showed in the build-out of the sewer, as you remember the results of the model. We do need additional capacity in the future at Tom Wharf. In the near term, we're going to need to make some improvements to cut down on the nitrogen and T D S that we're putting into the river to allow for additional development. So, the way that will play out is when we have arrived at, at what that next black box, if you will, at the plant is, that will be loaded into the capital improvements plan for Tom Wharf, once approved by our city council. Then those costs are loaded into our rate studies for connection fees. I suspect you'll see a connection fee study come your way here shortly. Mr. Hummel's working on one right now. To answer your question, Mr. Fueens, we need to create some more capacity on a chemical basis. There is a plan moving forward and a financing mechanism underway.
Can we talk about Commissioner Fueens against storm drain in this closed basin?
Yes.
You know, we've...
Wait a minute, not a closed basin.
I guess with one, one river out.
That's right. One river out.
Okay. Well, there's been a lot of talk about in North Reno on certain areas and flood. What are some things that, that we will not have that problem that you think are in this area?
So, as, as you well know, since I was just here meeting last, talking about Impact Fee Service Area One, it includes some $18 million in flood control projects, most of which have already been completed within Impact Fee Service Area One. With their petition tonight, so to cut it short, all their storm water that this generates will come down Highland Ranch Parkway in one form or another. They'll certainly have some retention basins on site to cut those flows down. It will then cross Pyramid Highway and get into, directly into the Sun Valley Diversion Channel, which is a capital improvement item inside Kylie Ranch, flow behind the Kylie Ranch Dam, and then enter into the rest of our flood control structures that were built south of Kylie Ranch Dam, all the way down to the river. And as the commission knows, we're just about a month and a half away from completing the North Truckee Drain improvements through the industrial area. So, all of the water from Highland Ranch Parkway will actually go out that brand-new twin 14-by-10 culvert that we built at one way or another. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Comments? Okay. Entertain a motion on the annexation.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Assistant City Attorney Allison McCormick. If you could open the item for public hearing.
Yes, I apologize. Okay, this is a public hearing, and I will open this item. So, if anybody would like to speak on it, you're welcome to come up and speak. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Questions? Comments?
Madam Chair, I'll move to...
Commissioner Reed, thank you.
Before I was called on.
Yes.
I moved to forward a recommendation of approval to city council for the annexation request, A X sixteen dash zero-zero-three, associated with P C N sixteen dash zero-zero-five-zero, based on findings A one through A four and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Need a second.
Commissioner Fueens, seconds.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Carey.
Quick comment, if I may.
Yes.
Although I don't agree with the proposed land uses, I do concur with staff's recommendation. I, I find that this is a logical extension of the city limits. I believe that it is also contiguous, and so I see no need to disagree with the recommendation of staff on this one. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, we'll discuss the Comprehensive Land Use Amendment request, which is M P A one-seven dash zero-zero-zero-five. It's a public hearing item, and I will open it. Does anybody like to come up and speak on that? Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Any commissioners have any comments? Commissioner Carey.
Couple of questions for, for staff, if I may. With the proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment, do we have any idea of what the fiscal impact to the city would be from changing the land use from business park, employment center to single family and, and commercial?
The fiscal impact analysis that we discussed earlier had a net benefit, if I remember the numbers right. It was 2.2, 2.8 acres. I mean acres, million dollars.
2.8 million. Yes. Yes. It was. 2.8. Yeah, it was.
Armando Arnales, Assistant Community Services Director. I think to more directly address your question, Commissioner Carey, the fiscal impact analysis did not ask for a comparison, if you will, of the E C uses to the proposed uses. We, we looked at the fiscal impact in this instance for the proposed land use and zoning classifications. You know, I would, I would say that were this something along the lines of a planned development where you had in particular, specific uses that had been, you know, designated and contemplated, it would be, you know, it would have been probably something we would have demanded. In this case, we did not do that.
So, from the opinion of staff, that this side, the site is not suitable for business park. It's more suitable for...
Yeah, I mean, I would have to agree with the applicant's contention that, given the lack of visibility of the site, that the employment center types of uses that the designation that was, that's on there contemplates aren't really viable. You know, I would point to the much more developable land for purposes of employment center that are on the east side of the Pyramid Highway in Kylie Ranch North and Stone Brook. I think those are appropriate locations for the type of use. I think the market hasn't been there to date, but I think that that's a more realistic expectation on that side of the highway. You know, certainly, it's, nothing that we can, any of us can know with any certainty, right? But, but I, I appreciate the question. But, I would, I would, I would agree with the applicant's contention again that this is not a particularly suitable site for employment center. contention again that this is not a particularly suitable site for employment center.
Okay. I, I think I know how this is going to go. I'll just sit in there. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other commissioners have any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, I-
Commissioner Peterson, thank you.
Madam Chair, did you do public hearing on this item?
I did.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're training me good, so thank you. That's okay, we all are.
Commissioner Peterson, I move to approve the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Amendment, MPA 17-0005, associated with a PCN 16-0050, based on the findings CP1 through CP4, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Can I get a second?
Commissioner Reed, second.
Thank you. I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Carey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll try to keep this brief. I, I will not be supporting the motion. I disagree with the proposed land use change. I think that this site has been designated as an employment center for a long time. I, I agree with that. Past, past master plan amendments have, have agreed with that as well. I believe that if we're, if we're going to really get serious about meeting our employment goals of the comprehensive plan, we need to stick with our master plan. We need jobs in, in the Spanish Springs Valley. I think if we're, if we're going to solve the traffic issues on Pyramid Highway, on Vista, on Sparks Boulevard, we really need to get serious about keeping with our master plan and having offices in Sparks. Certainly appreciate staff's opinion of that this will help meet the housing goals. We have an immediate need for housing. There's no doubt about that. But in the humble opinion of this commissioner, I, I, I believe that we need to, we need to advance our employment goals that have been on the books for 30 years, and I will not be supporting the motion. Thank you very much.
Okay, with that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Ne.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Next, we'll move along to the rezoning request, RZ 17-0006. I will open the public hearing. Is there anybody that request, uh, requests to speak? Yes. And if you'll please state your name and your address again, please. Thank you.
Bradley Paul Ellie, again. I've-
Thank you.
Been a property owner in Spanish Springs, or my family has since 1974, when Mr. York sold us some lots that Mr. Harvey Whittemore had the city of Sparks basically put in an enclave of his property, so you had to drive a quarter mile out to get to the road. So, I say that because I don't know what is compatible with a development of 6,000 square-foot lots with adjoining 1/3 acre and 40 acre and 20 acre lots. Can anyone please explain that to me? Why is that compatible? Do you have any idea how small that is? A modern zoning normally doesn't allow that except for senior housing, in my understanding. But, but you don't seem concerned about that at all. So, again, my ox is getting gored. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak? With that, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, I got a question for Karen.
Yes.
Karen, I think, I think a couple of years ago, you did a very thorough study on the, the air, airplanes that drive, fly over this property. Did you find that it was loud out there during, on the approaches or leaving of the airplanes?
No. The, the planes that flew over the site when I was doing the noise study for the, before they opened the granite, the granite opened their pit there, that was very, hardly picked up on the noise meter.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question, if you can do clarification, please, for the gentleman that spoke before to discuss as far as density. And then a follow-up with that is our code regarding ridge line development and slope development.
Okay.
Thank you.
The, your first question is regard to the properties, the proposed-
The property, the proposed property density and why we're, why we're proposing it, why it's allowed.
The compatibility.
The compatibility.
The compatibility.
Thank you.
Well, the Kylie Ranch project to the east of this will have, actually even smaller than 6,000 square-foot lots. Some of the, the villages have like 4,500 square-foot lots. Typical, 6,000 square-foot lot is our typical lot size for residential within the city of Sparks. So, 6,000 square-foot lot is a pretty typical, and that is our most common zoning district within the city of Sparks. If you look at our zoning map, is the most common, and also most common within most of our plan development handbooks also. So, that's why we feel that it's, it's a, it's a typical lot size within the city of Sparks.
Thank you. Then next, ridge line development?
When we do the slope analysis, we'll have to look at the, the steep slopes in that area. We have in the Sparks Municipal Code, a identified ridge line, and I did look at that map when I was preparing the staff report, and that is not identified ridge line in our code.
Thank you. Appreciate the clarification. Anyone else? Questions, comments? Okay, we're going to draw straws here in a minute, you guys.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Reed, thank you.
I move to forward a recommendation of approval to City Council for the rezoning request, RZ 17-0006, associated with CPN 16-0050, based on findings Z1 through Z3, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Can I get a second, please?
Yeah, Commissioner Fuehens, seconds.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Carey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be supporting the, the motion to, to approve. I don't, no, I, I disagreed with the land use change. However, now that our comprehensive plan has been changed, I find that this rezone is compatible with it. I, I can meet all the required findings.
Thank you. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Next, we'll move along to PCN 18-0007. Consideration on a tentative map for 459 single-family lots, Stone Brook Plan Development. Give me a second. Thank you.
The map wasn't coming up. I had a heart attack. So, this request before you is a tentative map request. They're asking for 459 single-family lots on a site that is 118.45 acres in size. This is located within the Stone Brook Plan Development. It is south of La Pasada, which is right up here, and north of the Pioneer Meadows. This is Pioneer Meadows down here, Plan Development, and west of, and this is Wingfield Hill, Wingfield Springs Development over here, in the Cyan. This is the area for the Stone Brook Phase 2 tentative map. They are going to be located in the southeast section of Stone Brook. The boundary of Stone Brook is like this, coming down this side around. It's basically a horseshoe located. The first tentative map was for 617 single-family lots, which was approved by City Council on February 10th, 2014. To date, there have been five final maps recorded or in review, and that's a total of 518 lots that have been mapped for that, of the 617. The applicant is requesting a tentative map consisting of five villages located within the Stone Brook Plan Development. The total number of units is, as they are requesting, is 459. The lot sizes range in, from 46,000, I mean, 4,625 to 20,649 square feet, which an average lot size of about 7,000 square feet. The overall gross density is 3.9 units per acre. This is the land use map showing that, what their land use designations are. This is the phase map. You can see here are the villages. The primary access to this property will be Stone Brook Parkway, which is the street coming down this way. The proposed road network conforms to the approved Stone Brook Plan Development Handbook. The existing and planned streets are designed to handle the traffic generated by this project. Now to address the tentative map findings. The first one is T1, which is a conformance with the master planning and zoning ordinances. The land uses in the Stone Brook Plan Development are adopted as part of the comprehensive plan map, and they are, the project is proposed as proposed, is consistent with our comprehensive plan land use map. This project supports goals H2 and H3 because the proposed tentative map includes a range of, or a mix of lot sizes. The Stone Brook Plan Development is approved as a community. It has a mix of housing types, near businesses complying with goal H3. As shown in the tentative map, the street cross-section shows sidewalks, which complies with policy C4. The infrastructure utilities are currently located to the northeast, and the requested densities are, are accounted in our city adopted sewer model, complying with policy CF1. The proposed tentative map has varied lot sizes, and house designs will be reviewed with the final map, which conforms with policy CC8. Finding T2, which is conformance with the Sparks Master Plan of Streets and Highways, the tentative map incorporates the street designs as shown in the Stone Brook Plan Development. This tentative map will require the extension of Stone Brook Parkway to access the property. Next finding, T3, which is the environmental and health laws and regulations. The application was distributed to the reviewing agencies, and the developer must comply with the comments and requirements of those agencies. The letters that we did receive to date have been, were attached to the staff report. Finding T4 is availability of water. The applicant has estimated that the water demand would be 177.76 acre feet. The water rights needed to serve this subdivision will be, have to be dedicated with each final map. Finding T5 is the availability and accessibility of the utilities. The developer's estimated sewage flow will be 160,650 gallons per day. The developer will be required to provide that there is adequate sewer capacity to serve the project prior to the recordation of any final map. Also, storm drainage and water will be reviewed and approved by the city engineer prior to the recordation of any final map. T6, which is the availability and accessibility of public services. Washoe County submitted a letter regarding this project, and the estimate, School District, the Washoe County School District, I'm sorry, estimates that this tentative map would generate 167 students. Police protection to this property would be through the Sparks Police Department. With the development of the subdivision, Stone Brook Parkway will be extended south into Phase 2 area. The project will contribute to the regional road impact fee program. Fire and emergency response will be provided by the Sparks Fire Department. Phase 2 is located out of the six-minute response time for the Sparks Fire Department. However, the city does have the agreement with Truckee Metals Fire Protection. As designed, the Stone Brook Parkway in Village F, which is this village coming down here, and also the Misty Springs, which is this road down here in Village D, do terminate at the western boundary of this property right now. And the fire department is requesting that until the development to the west is built and these roads do extend in, they are requesting that a turnaround be provided when these villages are developed. Finding T7, the effect on the proposed subdivision on the existing public streets and new streets. The anticipated project will generate 4,393 average daily trips with a PM peak trip amount of 459. The traffic impacts with Phase 2 have been considered with the review and approval of the final plan development handbook. This tentative map does not change the proposed traffic patterns or also, or, or the generated average daily trips. Finding T8, which is the physical characteristics of the land. For the floodplain, the FEMA or the Federal Emergency Management Agency approved a letter of revision in 2011 limiting the FEMA Zone A to the Reach 4 channel and pond area. That's the big white area coming through the middle of this map. Pertaining to the slopes, the site, the site is relatively flat and therefore does not meet the, the threshold requiring a slope analysis per the Sparks Municipal Code Title 20. A final geotechnical report will be required prior to the issuance of any building permit, which is condition nine. Tendent of the finding T9, recommendations and comments from the reviewing agencies. Staff did receive comments from the Washoe County School District and the Washoe County District Health, or Health District. These are attached to your staff report. Finding T10 is the availability and accessibility of fire protection. I have previously discussed this on finding T6. Finding T11 is the identified impacts. Staff has identified, the first impact is the parks. The proposed park as shown on the tentative map, or the best map is to look at this. This is their land use map, I mean, landscaping plan. This is the proposed park site. Staff did meet with Parks and Rec Department, and the Parks and Rec Department has asked to work with the developer to establish a community park site. They did not feel that this was a size or good location for the community park. That is condition 18 on the tentative map conditions. The next impact, discussion item was the regional trail. Condition 14 requires that the missing section of the regional trail be completed with the associated final map. There is along the eastern portion of this property, a gap in the regional trail, and so we are requiring with the development of this final map that they would, that trail would be implemented. The next is the open space within each village. An open space is provided. You can see the green or the trail area, I mean, the drainage area here. There is the Reach Drainage Channel, Regional Trail. The dark line here along the north and east side of the trail, I mean, the drainage is the regional trail. There is proposed to be 19.63 acres of common area. The next issue or impact is the landscaping. The Stone Brook Handbook provides the standards for landscaping for each village, the fencing and also lighting. With each final map, the developer will have to demonstrate compliance with the plan development handbook, which is condition 12. The last item is the condition, architecture, and condition eight addresses this. Each of the home, each villages, the home elevations will be reviewed with the final map for that village. Public notice, which is T, finding T12, is that, serves as the meetings or the hearings before planning commissioning city council. There is no, no noticing requirements for a tentative map. Therefore, staff is recommending approval with 21 conditions. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, and I open-
Nope.
Nope, sorry.
It's a general business.
Sorry it's not. Okay. You just, you had me trained to open them all, so. There you go. We're going to make sure I keep doing it right. Okay, commissioners, any discussion on this? Commissioner Carey?
Madam Chair, I feel an applause is, is, is needed for, for all of Karen's great work this afternoon.
I agree. Thank you, Karen.
With that, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the tentative map associated with PCN 18-0007. Hope I got that right, for a portion of the Stone Brook Plan Development, adopting findings T1 through T12, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, and subject to the conditions of approval 1 through 21 listed in the staff report.
Phil, second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Next, we're going to move along to consideration of and possible action on the city of Sparks Regional Planning Annual Report to the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency.
Madam Chairman, the item you've waited all night to hear is, and you're gonna read it.
And you're gonna make it quick, right?
All in ex- Excuse me, detail.
Are you done yet?
I'll go through it very quickly. So, the annual report is required by state statutes each year to describe how the actions of the Planning Commission have furthered or assisted in carrying out the policies and programs of the Comprehensive Regional Plan. So, there are a bunch of different sections of that plan. It was supplied to you, so you can read it at your leisure. We don't have to go through all those in detail tonight. Essentially, as far as promoting infill, we have an adopted zoning ordinance that was recently updated, and a lot of those updates had to do with making that infill and in some of our downtown areas more easily to promote and get done. Our capital improvement plan is also an element in that, the capital improvement plan spent thirteen point three million dollars in two thousand and seventeen, mostly on road improvements, as well as some park improvements are in there. Redevelopment Area One had seven projects started or completed in two thousand and seventeen. Redevelopment Area Two had five projects, either started or completed in two thousand and seventeen. Our housing rehab program funded both emergency repair grants and housing rehab deferred loans. In two thousand and seventeen, the Sparks, city of Sparks assisted eleven households with seven thousand, seventy-six thousand seventy-five dollars in funding. The city did not complete any annexations in two thousand and seventeen. We did process three Comprehensive Plan Amendments. And then, finally, there are a few outstanding items with our Comprehensive Plan compared to the requirements of the Regional Comprehensive Plan, but we are waiting for the update of the Regional Comprehensive Plan to be finalized before we address those, because some of those are moving targets, and we wanna make sure we're shooting at the right. Staff does recommend that the Planning Commission endorse and forward the annual report to the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission and Governing Board. That's the end of my presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Yes, Commissioner Peterson.
I have a question.
He's gonna make it quick.
Yes. Did you fight Jim for this presentation, knowing how late it is? Or is it past his bedtime?
He is not in the office this week, and so asked me to cover for him.
No excuse.
Right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the Commissioners? Yeah, I'll entertain a motion.
Commissioner Fewon, I'm ready to make a motion.
Thank you.
I move to endorse and forward to the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission and Governing Board, the city of Sparks Annual Report for calendar year two thousand and seventeen.
Commissioner Brock, second.
Oh, hey, now you guys are gonna move quick. Okay, I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Next, we'll move along to public comment. Do we have any? Okay, I'm gonna close the public comment. Comments from the Commissioners?
Commissioner Fewon, so I do-
Yes, Commissioner Fewon.
I do have something that I would like to our state legislatures to kind of work on in their next session. We have approved quite a few new homes and new developments that are starting. I would like them to relook at our property tax, how that is being looked at in our state, and hopefully that gets updated to help fund schooling and the municipalities a little better.
And I echo that. Any other comments from the Commissioners? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to commend you. Great job leading your first meeting this afternoon, this evening. Well done, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it, and I'd like to say, I appreciate all the hard work that staff did. I know this is a big agenda, and we had a lot to handle, and I appreciate the support of staff, and I appreciate the support of my fellow Commissioners. So, with that, I will call for an adjournment. Anybody? There we go. We're done.